All right, I'd like to call the order. The February 19th meeting of the Shrin Falls Public Education. Mr. Rudolph, please take the role.
Mr. Rainey.
Here.
Mr. Kanziger.
Here.
Mrs. Rose.
Here.
Mrs. Garvey.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Toole.
Yes.
Okay, everybody, please join the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have the minutes, regular minutes from January 22nd, 2020. If I could have a motion for the approval for minutes. All right, we have a second.
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 Mary Kay has a second.
Sorry, Greg.
Sorry.
All right, any discussion? Mr. Rudolph, you conclude the rule.
Mr. Rainey.
Yes.
Mr. Kanziger.
Yes.
Mrs. Rose.
Yes.
Mrs. Garvey.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Toole.
Yes.
All right, this time we'll go ahead and go through the committee updates. If nothing has changed since the last meeting, we're going to just pass. Otherwise, if you see a quick update, appreciate it. Audit Committee, this is O'Toole.
Ashley, Bob, myself, and the three committee members that are on the Audit Committee met with our auditors, Rain Associates, for the post-audit conference on February 6th until the state releases, accepts the audit and makes a public document, it's a public discussion. But I will say that there was no surprises and I'm confident in our presentation of our community status. I can say that this is the last year of our contract with Rain Associates. I think we've had two five-year contracts with them. So the audit this year, the state auditor's office is ultimately responsible for auditing public entities. And they, you know, can't do everybody, so they release people and we never know. I think so before Rain Associates, the last 10, the state auditors did us for one year. So the state auditors may audit us next year or they may release us. If they release us, then it goes out to bid, but the state's auditor's office ultimately decides, you know, it's all a formula and they decide. So we'll see who our auditors are next year as to be determined.
I would expect them to take us back at least for a year, given that it has been 10 years with the turnover in the department and it's a nice audit for them to have. So I know how they've made some decisions in the past and this is one that, you know, after a certain number of years out, they do like to take back just to check on things. But they'll be fighting for us a lot of the staff if they take it back, I'll tell you that.
Do you think they'll only have it for one year?
Probably because we have gone out so often and with such success and it's fairly low risk to them to let us go with an IPA, I would imagine they would take us back just for one year and then let us go.
Do they invoice us for the cost of the audit then, or how does it work?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Invoices, just like, just like the IPA. Actually, the IPA invoices for the audit comes through the state. They have to submit their invoices to the state and then the state approves them and then they come to us. So our process will be made if we accept them or if they state of the law.
I conclude my report.
Okay, you want to go on the board policy?
No report for policy committee.
Business Advisory Committee, Mrs. Garvey.
No report, and there's also a new report on cap management. Where are finance and budget?
Three in a row. And no report for record retention. All right, moving on, we'll go to superintendent's reports. Want to introduce Mr. Rudolph?
Sure. Thank you. Good evening. I want to thank Senator Dolan for being here this evening. Don't think he needs a real big introduction here at Shrin Falls. Obviously, the 24th Ohio Senate District Representative. Originally had reached out to Senator Dolan in the fall to come talk to us and really wanted to thank him for his efforts on behalf of Public Education with fair funding, budget process, specifically with the graduation requirements. And obviously, it's got a little more tenuous lately with Ed Choice and I really continue to advocate for schools. So thank you for that. I get the, I guess, the privilege of seeing, certainly under executive committee of Alliance, a lot of the work and lobbying and communication that's going on. And Matt is always approachable, certainly cares about kids in school and has done a tremendous amount of work in a lot of ways to help schools right now. So I want to thank you first of all for everything you're doing for Ohio schools. Maybe, maybe we'll just jump right in and start with an update on Ed Choice and anything else. You have, I have a few things I'd like you to cover, but if we could talk about the kind of the landscape of that choice, the boards getting emails, mom getting emails, and would love to hear from you kind of where it stands and where it might go.
Thank you. Thank you for those questions. It certainly opens the questions during or after the presentation. So I will try to be relatively quick. First thing is, is on behalf of General Assembly, we owe you and all school boards and families and teachers the apology because my job is not to pass policy that you may all like. My job is to give clarity and we are, we are not providing clarity to schools and families and teachers and superintendents throughout the state. And lately, that's revolving around the Ed Choice issue. So briefly, let me just give you a quick history that will put in context of what we're actually debating now. 20 years ago, Ohio started Ed Choice Scholarship Voucher Program. And it was based on performance of the school district or building. That if a school district or building was receiving an F, then students within that school district are eligible for a voucher to take that to go to another school. We then introduced a program, I wasn't legislating, but they called it the same thing, Ed Choice, but this was income based. And that said that irrespective of how your school building's doing or your district is doing, if you are below a certain level of poverty and 200% are below poverty, you are eligible for a voucher to take that voucher to go to any school that you want. So those are the two programs.
Is it private or just?
No, just, just private.
Just private.
You could take the voucher dollars and go to a private school.
Not to a different district.
Okay. Not to a different district. Ed Choice performance is paid for out of the school district budget. Ed Choice income is paid for out of the state. So if Shrin were to have a, you know, I hate using Shrin as an example because I don't think it impresses you, but Shrin's not a failing school. Let's make that clear. But just to drive home the point, if you were, somebody, a high school student could say, "I don't want to go to Shrin High School, I want to go to Gilmore." Then if it was based on that performance, you guys would have to write a check to Gilmore for $6,000 out of your budget. If someone were to say, "He lives in Shrin," now this could happen, "I, my family makes below 200%, 200% of poverty, I don't want to go to Shrin School, I want to go to Gilmore St. John of Art," then the state would pay that voucher. So those are two, two issues. The issue that today we're dealing with originated seven years ago when the General Assembly made changes to the report card system, which ultimately determines how, largely determined how you're doing. Well, it is clear now that no matter how well intended, the metrics that they're using to grade a school system they're doing is completely faulty. And the two biggest examples of that are value-added in K-3 and Lewis. Value-added is simply the idea that some schools who are failing are saying, "Look, there's no way to gauge our improvement. We want, we want to be able to show our improvement. So let's keep it basic." If in year one, a class gets 62% on a standardized, that's failing. If the next year they get a 68%, that's still failing, but under value-added, they wouldn't get a high grade of a grade of an A because they're showing great improvement. Now, it was fascinating, Sullen, our neighbor district here, Sullen had a middle school where one year they, every single student about 100% on a standardized. The following two years, they got 98 and 96. Sullen, that particular building, got an F under value-added. And the change was made if any two, there were three years picked out, if two of those three years, you got an F in any one of the metrics, you were put on performance eligibility for vouchers. So Ohio went from 229 schools that were failing or underperforming, thus eligible for performance-based scholarships, to if we don't make a change by April 1st, we're going to 1,227 schools around the state that are deemed failed. And that is tragic because A, most, it's not true, Sullen is not anywhere close. So, and B, look at the state that that based on Ohio schools. So we had to deal with it. So the Senate came up with a plan that I worked on that said, "Okay, let's say that if your overall grade is either A, B, C, or D, and you're not under about 20%, so if your, if your overall grade is A, B, or C, no matter what your sub-metrics are, you are not eligible for performance-based scholarship. If your overall grade is a D and you are in the top 80% of the schools in the state in that category, then you're not eligible for performance-based scholarship. So it would limit it only to failing schools, overall grade of failing schools, and under 20%. That would allow for more time to figure out, first of all, take most of those schools off the list. We wouldn't expand the performance-based scholarships and would give us time to fix the underlying problem, which is we are not accurately reflecting what's happening in these schools. So that was what the Senate put forward. They did, we did make a change, which ultimately I think would have changed significantly. And that is on the Ed, Ed Choice income side, now this is important to understand for my conclusion, there's a group in the Senate that wanted to go from 200% of poverty to 400% of poverty, which means if you're under 400% of poverty, you're eligible for an income-based scholarship. On the Senate side, we compromised at 300. I believe we compromised at 300 because I thought the House was going to go lower. The House surprised us all and ignored our plan completely and came out with a plan that I think is, that really was causing confusion, where they're saying, "Well, let's just get rid of Ed Choice performance altogether and only have an Ed Choice income side. Therefore, the state would pay for all of them," which on its face sounds like a good idea for public schools. I, however, based on what I know, that the mindset of legislature and the General Assembly know which direction most people want to go, I think in the long term, this is not a very good move for public schools. And I don't think it's a good move for families. So let me deal with families first. If you move away from performance-based scholarships, you are telling a, a family that is under, if they're over a certain percent of poverty, that they have to go to a failing school. And Cleveland and Columbus and Cincinnati and Toledo, their urban renewal is based on the idea that we're going to improve the school system, but until you're not, until you're satisfied, you have the ability to go to another school based on performance. So I think you're going to see a mass exodus of these urban dwellers because they don't want to go to those schools. I mean, as cruel as that sounds, that's a reality. So I think it's going to be bad for families, I think it's going to be bad for cities. Why I think it's bad for schools is there is no magic, two pots of money thing. And everyone wants to say, "Oh, good, now the public schools no longer have to pay for those scholarships." Well, I believe that the amount of Ed Choice income is going to go up and up and up. So you're going to have more kids eligible throughout the state irrespective of how well your school system is doing, and the state will have to pay for those. But where do you think that money's coming from? It's coming from the same bucket that funds foundation formula. And right now, the, the House plan, grandfathers for one year, all those who are on performance-based scholarships that the school districts still have to pay for, and then they'll roll into the income-based scholarship program. But right now, rounding, there is $159 worth of scholarships being paid by school districts throughout the state. So when that rolls off, that's now going to be paid for by the state directly to families. That's $159 less going into the K-12 foundation formula. It is not two buckets of money, it's the same bucket of money. I think you're also going to run into problems with the idea that the foundation formula is frozen. One of the good things we did in the budget, we got the fair funding formula all the way to the governor's desk, but we also got wellness dollars throughout the state that are, to help children better be prepared. We can talk about that. But we didn't do anything to the formula. So we still have a number of schools that are on the cap and they're under the guarantee. Well, if you're on the cap, that means the foundation formula has said you are owed more money than the state has been giving. And if you're on the guarantee, it says even though you have less students than you are getting money for, we're going to give you the guarantee. Well, so both sides are going to be like, "Wait a second, all of a sudden, we're driving money to go to income choice students." Those cap schools, which right now are owed $269, you're going to be like, "Wait a second, what about, what about us?" You're, that money's owed to us, you're moving it somewhere else. I think that's going to create a problem. These public schools, who think this is such a bonanza for them, because now they don't have to write that check to the, to the income, to the school, a lot of those schools that are going to apply are on the guarantee. Now all of a sudden, all those students that they're getting money for that they don't currently have, which we all know, are going to go away and they're going to receive less money. I also believe overall, there's going to be less foundation formula money if we moved to more of an income-based program. What I'd like to see us do is, is maintain a level of performance-based scholarships for the truly underperforming school. Come up with a metric that defines, you know, how they can get out of this, this cycle, but release the burden on most of the schools in the state that their, that their families aren't eligible for a voucher unless you're under a certain level of poverty, which, which I would argue we should keep low. So the fear I have is that the income base side is going to increase more and more and more and more. That's going to be more dollars going into families away from these public school districts. You are going to run into a problem where, and it's already being raised now, is the idea that, well, you know, I, I believe everyone thinks that we're all going to educate our kids. And what's been unfortunate with some of these hearings is now that some of the public school people are undermining the Catholic school, the Catholic school is undermining the Catholic, and that's never been the case. Even in the fair funding formula, which simply says that public schools should receive the same amounts of auxiliary service, not once did ever hear any superintendent say because they're educating so badly. So it's, we all want kids to be educated, we all respect that people make different choices. The reality though is, is Catholic schools in particular are going to be able to say, "Wait a second, we don't have the room to allow these kids." So they're either going to say, "We need more money," and then the kids can't, families can't afford above the scholarship, or they're going to have entrance exams. And so now only the kids that can fit in the schools. And that's not the cycle we, we want to be in. And I'm afraid that's what's going to happen if you go all income-based. So our hoping is that we reach a middle ground, and I know the public schools are really adamant about the House, but I would just be worried that a short-term perceived gain is really a long-term loss for, for public schools. Now, how do you fix it? Everybody wants, I know you want to talk about Cup Patterson. Well, first, before I go, I mean, do you have any question?
You said that, so some of the schools that are on the guarantee also would, are also being targeted as having the problems issues. Are most of the schools on the guarantee, though, similar to Shrin in that it's a wealth issue that they're relying on wealth, local funds, or is there other, are there other reasons why you would be on the guarantee?
There are other reasons and I, I'm going to pick out. So, so there are urban school districts that are on the guarantee, and the reason they're on the guarantee is a lot, lots of factors. The reason is a lot of the folks have gone and are not going to the public school, either because they're performance-based scholarship, but under our foundation formula, we still count the enrollment as if those kids are still going to apply. If you move to an income-based only, that's going to go away and I think, but there, what some of the public schools are rooting for now is going to be real an eye open for them when they're receiving significant, going to be less dollars because there's less, there's less kids.
And that would impact even a district like ours as we see enrollments applying if the guarantee was no longer the guarantee.
Correct.
And then studies on like, that more schools would be opening, there's more of that money, that's including the amount of money to all the schools. Has there, has there been a book on that or anything like that?
So I'm not aware of any studies, but I am aware that the private schools are actively recruiting, knowing their scholarship dollars available, saying, "Hey, you can now access state dollars to come to our school." Whether more are going to be created or not, I don't know.
I'm just wondering, like, are there more charter schools and things like that, where is, more of those schools open and there's more infrastructure support, that money gets diluted?
So charter schools is, is a separate animal from this issue. Yeah, yeah. So you, so I don't want to mix, yeah, I don't want, charter schools are separate apart from the vouchers.
Charter schools are already getting a $6,000 one.
I guess you sort of, you have choice of the student.
It's already out.
It seems like at, at some point, there are going to be more schools, they're going to score super violent services because they're splitting the same amount of money. So what are you just going to do again? How this is affecting that? And at some point, you need to like, if you really want all these, your ideas at all these schools, you really need to put more money into the system at some point. So I'm wondering, are you more looking at putting more money into the system from the state?
So.
Because they're trying to get all this choice.
So since 1994, through this budget, every year, more dollars gone into the K-12 budget. The reality though is it's not the amount of money, it's the distribution of that money that is causing the connection. So Cup Patterson, although it's sounding really good, they're not changing the fundamental thought that it's still state dollars and local property tax dollars. They're defining what it costs to educate a child, which is great, but they haven't yet attacked all the factors that go into the formula, poverty index, value, worse yet, perceived value, which is what they put in a few years ago, which is really bad to districts like Shrin. So hopefully, Cup Patterson will take that. But all the other factors that decide your own success works against you in the distribution of the state dollar. And I don't know that Cup Patterson is going to, not, not.
I agree with, because I have the message even from an organization. So how, how, what is the best way to help Ed Choice?
So I mean, like, my best option is to, I would love if the message got, "Hey, why aren't we slowing this down? These are complicated funding issues." I don't like to pick winners and losers, but the reality is our, the Senate fix was designed to do just that, do no harm and provide a gateway, a pathway, I should say, to fixing the underlying problem, which is the report card system. And then if we are going to make funding changes, let's do it deliberately because we're in this mess because we make last-minute decisions. So that's what I've been arguing for. I know that's the position of the Alliance, which represents a number of school systems. It's like, wait a second, maybe, maybe reducing the performance base and maybe putting income basis is the way to go, but are we going to put a hard cap on the poverty level so that it doesn't creep each and every year? Are we going to put a no-harm policy, which means that K-12 funding is funding at a normal rate or higher, it can't, it can't be reduced? These are all things that we, we have thrown out to the House to say, "Why aren't we looking at that?" This is not an issue for Shrin, but a number of schools get money outside the formula for economic disadvantages, would they still get that? Would you be eligible for federal dollars? If all of a sudden, the state is directing money to the, to the public, to private schools, families, private schools, there are some school systems that might lose some federal dollars. So none of that is being talked about. It's just a black and white, you either want vouchers or you don't.
That's a conversation around testing if a voucher report, what do you come through to those problems? Are they going to have to jump on board with the same testing requirements to prove they're not on that list as well?
So those are great questions that, that there's no, there's no discussion on the House plan about any of that. All of a sudden, state money's going, if we're going to be putting minimum $159 in the private schools, what, what accountability do we want for that? So, and, and I want to move in the direction of releasing some mandates. I mean, I'm afraid that if we go put more mandates on private schools, it, it's going to be very difficult for, to give you guys relief because you're educating, the children, parents are involved, your grades are good, your test scores are good, your placement analysis is good, you know, all the metrics that people rely on. Shrin's really fine. So we want to be able to relieve you of some of those mandates that you don't get funded for. If we start moving to a protocol where we're funding private school and putting requirements on that, it's not going to come off of you guys. They're not going to say, "Okay, good, public schools don't have to do that." So I, I just worry, these are all questions that we are not even addressing. And I, I think we better be careful in how we progress.
So I don't even know if these are fair questions or part of your name too. It seems like, for most of these things to be more so last, you know, of the three to four years, we're putting the legislature in a position to constantly stop problems or fix problems, or we're not on the front of the department side or from education side. How do we, how do we start that shift anyway? Because, I mean, I, some of these are, you are up against the wall, you've got to make a decision, you make it quick, and then there's the unintended consequences. I don't think you, I'm talking about the legislature, instead of our, the Department of Education leaving a charging of where we need to go or bring people along. So again, it may not be fair.
No, I, I guess I see that as a real issue, we'll constantly be put in these situations until we resolve that. And I think that's the fair criticism of the department, I think it's the fair criticism of, of the General Assembly. This particular issue, we have known about for, for a little while now because the original deadline was February 1st and we tried to get moving on it, ran into problems, and then we felt we came up with a fix and the House decided to go in a different direction. So here we are with extension. And like I said, that's why I opened with, my job, I can come here and explain why we're really, if you can disagree, but what I hate coming here and saying, "I don't have answers for you." We'll be finding uncertain to, you know, you guys are putting your budgets together now, every school around the state is putting budgets together now, you're hiring teachers, how many kids are we going to have next year? Those are questions you guys can't answer because we're not acting. And I'm afraid that in, as to act, to fix a problem, you know, a program that's been 20 years overnight is not the right way. And I think we'd be standing here a few years from now saying, here are the unintended consequences of what we did, I think, four years ago. So I guess the long way to answer your question is, if you could get them to argue patiently and say, "Look, there are too many unanswered questions to go this far forward now. So let's, let's cause no harm," which is what the Senate version was, "Cause no harm, figure it out, and then if we have to make changes, let's make..." And look, we're going to our budget in a, in a year from now. We've stabilized in our own budget. I was the chairman, I, I, there's not, there's not a magic pot of money that we can dip into. So someone's going to feel the pain, and I'm saying it's going to be public schools.
So last one, I think, is relevant to our board we haven't discussed, is this whole territorial transfer issue. Can you talk a little bit about that and where that revolves?
So, if I can go on a slight tangent, just so you understand my answer, my answer could be a non-answer, is, look, there was a lot of hoopla about Honey Valley work and I owned up to it. And if you guys want to know why we did, I can explain, but... and I owned up to it, and if you guys want to know why we did, I can explain, but we subsequently got, got it worked out because we got their attention. The reason I bring that up is because I don't know who put this amendment in. It came into the House, we took it out of the Senate, and the House insisted that it come back in. What it did is allowed a, one particular township in a school district to be able to leave that school district and go to another. We thought it was crazy, the House insisted on it, and now they put in their, in their end choice fix, they put language in and says, oh, you, you can't do that, except for this one community still can do it. So I, I don't know who really wanted that. We did not think it was good policy. We hope that it's going to be corrected, but it's not going to be corrected for the plain school district, which is where, and they have subsequently sued and subpoenaed a lot of legislators, because we obviously don't want to lose a very wealthy part of their district to allow them to pick up and go somewhere else. So I, I think that, I think it's going to be fixed, it's not going to be allowed to happen, but no one's owning up to the, to the bill at this point.
I guess I just want to make sure it's on the way of the conversation, because I've heard crazy stories that even portions of townships with a local vote can join the school district tonight.
So like I said, I, it sounds a little defensive, but the Senate, we, our version, we took it out, and despite our objections, the House insisted on doing it. Now we're trying to get a fix for it, and the House is insisting we can't fix that one school system, that's one school system still. And, you know, the governor vetoed fair funding, we didn't veto this one.
I understand. Anything else coming down the pipe? Do you think this will come in for us?
Well, I, I mean, we got fair funding to the governor's debt, so we are in the process of educating the governor's people as to why that is important, and why it is, you know, fair, why it's not an attack on, on private and Catholic schools. We provide the same services. So, you know, that we hope with better education, we can now get it through, and maybe even have a part of the governor's end of the dues money. But again, that, that costs about 37 million dollars, so it's a lot of money, but that's in the realm of doing, but all of a sudden, if you're shifting 150 million dollars to this other program.
Yes, it's not there.
Any other wins?
Report card, graduation requirements.
Yep. Well, report card, we, we got to continue to work at, at, like, I, I want to see more flexibility in it, that we use some metrics I talked about before that, that the real world uses. So if, if you're placing 90% or above into, you know, further education or military, it's a sign that you're doing something. Because I guarantee you, the colleges, our public universities, they don't look at the test scores. You know, they look at what's, what's big done in, in the bill. But if we're going to continue testing, we have to do it more than a test, get the results back to the teachers so they can actually learn from it and use it, so.
But you've heard that our board last week saw, where the testing's happening during the course of the year, that data's available, at some point that conversation needs to happen. Why can't we just roll up this data for the state to demonstrate what we're going to pay for?
I, I would love to get, I'd love to.
Well, thank you, I know.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't wish to provide much clarity.
That's good background, it's time.
Well, and I'm, and where I, I started this, we, we appreciate your advocacy for public education, certain shit are involved, but public education across the state and higher, we always seem to fall on the right side of this, and things are in the right direction, so we appreciate that. And everything is, you're very clear and sort of forward, and we honestly appreciate that there's, that we've got a lot to, to do.
Appreciate that. And I'm also a living example of you guys, so I just got back from Florida when my son goes to college, graduated a year, a year ago. And, you know, this guy's all over his school, and he's, I, I've seen a lot of this stuff. Came from, came from here.
Senator Bill, any other questions? Did you guys mind if I?
No.
Don't forget your jacket though. I'm going to go on. All right, thank you. Make sure it's on.
Yeah, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay, we are going to transition into social studies review and final, that people are going to work on, I'm just with a teacher team this year, and she will go through that presentation eventually.
I appreciate the opportunity to share kind of our work throughout the year in K-12 social studies. This is, as you heard for several weeks ago, about ELA being up for review, it is also the year of social studies too, so it's been quite busy. And what you all hear about tonight really truly reflects our commitment to putting students first and really meeting the very needs of our students across K-12. So let me walk you through our process. We started in the fall by assembling the K-12 Social Studies Committee membership, and that you'll see in just a minute, but it was teacher representatives across K-3 per grade level, and then all four 12 social studies teachers. We worked to identify non-negotiable characteristics, you might remember that we did the same with our ELA folks, really to help us guide our review of programs and resources to use with students. We conducted a gap analysis or needs assessment relative to all of the state standards and the AP College Board standards to see kind of where our needs fell. We reviewed tons of resources from all of the approved vendors. We collected feedback from all of the teachers reviewing those materials throughout, you know, following each of our PD days across time up until last week. We compiled as much research as was requested, with interesting questions about different programs, or, you know, if other districts were finding success in using programs, we compiled that and shared that. And then here we are tonight, or I am tonight on behalf of the committee with proposals for adoption. Once adopted, our next plan would be to schedule professional involvement. I tentatively booked at least two grade levels for our upcoming PD day to do a webinar training with our K-1 teachers, and others will do their own webinar training that's specific to their grade level, for the older grade levels. And then the next level of work would be refining or redoing our curriculum maps to reflect the use of the new resources, and then identifying any other PD needs, and then creating common assessments. And so you can see here really the thing that's probably most interesting, not that all of them are interesting, but that these were the grade level representatives identified, also reflected that we, you know, included our intervention specialists as well. And then you see from each of the other schools, all of the teachers that teach social studies. So here, none of these are really shocking non-negotiables, in fact, some of them are very similar to the ELA non-negotiables. Obviously, they need to be programs that are aligned to the state standards or college board standards, but there are some things that are really specific to social studies teachers and the needs of students, things like inclusion of primary source documents, resources that would support different learning modalities, read aloud options for text for students that might be our struggling readers, some sort of assessment creator or item bank that teachers could pull from when they're making their formative assessments or their summative assessments with students, and differentiation tools that are part of a program.
Is the online writing, is that increased amount of writing or writing that has been in social studies?
They were kind of hoping, since it's the year of ELA, to use some of the things, so actually some of the work that PD will pick up after this year of ELA adoption, is taking the strategies, I think you might remember, we're talking about the strategies that were kind of deemed as the most important nature of the buildings, pushing it out beyond the ELA teachers. So the intent is over time with each of our adoptions, that we can push out those reading and writing strategies into all the content areas, because you're right, if you're a struggling reader, a struggling writer, it impacts you across the board. So that's a great point. Also appreciating, let's see, the vocabulary, making sure that there's vocabulary study, making sure it's parent guardian friendly, especially for our younger students who might be helping their child to study for a quiz or a test, just making sure that that's available. So we did conduct that needs assessment, that was done in Google Docs, it took all of the standards, and had teachers as a grade level or as a group teaching that common course, really look at the resources they currently had to teach, and kind of figure out if those resources fully met the standards, or partially met and what was missing, or really weren't meeting the standard, and what they hoped to find to meet the standard. Through that work, we immediately were able to identify some things that are actually free, supplementary resources that we could use to kind of fill some of the gaps that we identified, but the gaps were relatively minimal, which was very different from ELA. So I think as you, as we move on through the presentation, you'll see that some similar programs we're reviewing, that's very much the reason why, because teachers were feeling like the current programs are really working for our students. So this is kind of a summary of our K-8 decisions. The yellow highlights reflect things that are outside of our typical curriculum cycle. Second grade was delayed here in their previous decision-making, so now they're delayed here with purchase of their new program, if it's, it's approved by the board. So they did identify, because all of the grade levels were doing their gap analysis, they identified a program that is actually a different program than what they currently use, but that will not happen until next school year. With third grade, third grade, because we are state standards and really across K-8, our standards can be very different than national standards in third grade, much of the attention is your local history and learning about Schrin Falls. So that being said, there really is not a textbook out there that would just provide information about Schrin Falls. So the teachers have really done an excellent job of coming up with their locally created units and having each teacher be kind of a master of different units, and students rotate through. So at this time, they have not identified anything different than what they're currently using, but I'm sure if there is something, you know, that's awesome, that appears in the next six years, they might want to revisit that. Similarly with fifth grade, you remember last school year, we adopted the TCI program previous to that, we did not have any textbook being used, but once we had more than one teacher teaching social studies, we felt like it was really needed to have some consistent use of textbooks. Just things of note here, when we've had new AP teachers join the fold, or new courses offered, sometimes that kind of throws the cycle out of whack, but, or sometimes vendors will encourage you to go with a five-year bundle, and they have no more than five-year bundles, which provides an online access to students in the cheapest way, most physically responsible way, whereas some are on a six-year rotation. So sometimes that can kind of throw it out of whack too. But nonetheless, teachers did review materials that are out there. I know our government teacher kind of wants to see, because college board has done a redesign, they kind of want to see what is available in the next year or so, but, you know, we've done a good job of reviewing what's out there thus far.
Question that AP does.
Sure.
I became aware recently that some private schools teach it in a semester.
Right.
And actually Penn. Has that been examined, that it could be a semester class?
We have talked about it, but the AP exam will still remain as a spring only option. And so in our AP collaborative, which is a group of high performing schools in the area, where we get teachers together, I oversee the social studies teachers, and so it's been really interesting hearing directly from the AP doc teacher in Pennsyl, how difficult it is to have, it being a semester course, that it's, it's kind of a double block, that they might do like eight minutes of, but nonetheless, they, they have a bigger chunk of time, but it's only for a semester, but the students that take it in the fall are expected to kind of get all of that information fresh for the test.
Could it just be hybrid, right?
Well, the, the problem, or the potential problem with spring is that getting all of that in before the test falls, getting all of that learning in, so it just, you know, would depend on the calendar and that type of thing. But they have an extended, you know, they're on a block schedule in Pennsyl, so there are situations.
Are you familiar with any other schools that offer it as a semester, where they, they also have like eight minutes?
I am not, I am not.
It just seems like, you know, it sounds like you're on top of it, but any opportunity to bring up student schedules to take a different class would be nice, if it's, if material can be taught in a semester.
Sure. I mean, it's a great question, across our collaborative, which includes like West G, Hudson, we have kind of, oh, Sullivan, also in there. We have teachers from across the, it just depends if they show up to different, because not that our history is like, and it's only participant that had the semester course.
And, and tell, just so we understand, block is double the amount of time, so if a summer, they'll, they'll have the same amount of time, but do it in a semester.
Semester, great. I just, that's why I asked if that's true of all the schools that offer it as a semester level course?
Definitely.
If it's, if you need that extra time or the content, you know, having students, myself, who've got good AP push and GOV.
Right.
GOV certainly feels a lot more readable, doable in a year's time, whereas AP push, you know, you're feeling like you're barely covering all of the content.
Right.
If that puts it on your radar, I think, you know, it sounds like you're aware of that possibility, giving advantage, and continue to look at it.
Yeah, I think it's definitely worth exploring and across.
Sure.
So next steps, obviously proposing all of the titles that you, and demo accounts to view, or that you get the hard copy access for, proposing that for adoption tonight, training of the new programs is needed, refinement of maps, the assessment development, and then for next school year, as you might remember, when we talked about course proposals, that next year we will, we'll come back around, once we have another social studies teacher hired at the high school, to kind of determine what we'd like to do to replace economics with maybe a different elective course that might be more appropriate for a large group of students. So we're going to kind of look to see what a new person might bring to the district as far as experience in teaching or creating courses, and then what student interest, interest might be in courses as well.
That's just a question. You have that right on the new teacher, social studies at the high school.
Well, we get a mid-year retirement, so if we do, I mean, of course, everything is related to all of those types of things, so it's very early days in that process, but if we were to hire a new teacher to join the social studies program at the high school, they might come with other experiences of teaching electives that we don't currently offer, so it might be interesting to explore those.
I'd like you to clarify that it's a replacement, not a new head.
Absolutely, yeah.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. And I, I know you kind of challenged, so.
Two.
We won't be attending.
Thank you.
All right. This panel, can you, your, your report?
All right, so the first, um, report that I have to share tonight is an update on our expenditure review. So, you know, we start out the year talking about things we're going to look at and what we're going to do, and then I didn't want to just come and say, okay, but we want you to, to cut. So, you know, this isn't just me, this is, Bob is certainly involved in this, cabinet discussions and things like that. This is something that we're always looking at, constant. This is something that we're always looking at, constantly reviewing our expenditures, looking for ways where we can be more efficient. And it's not something that we necessarily talk to or talk to you about all the time, we don't bring it up, but we are always doing behind scenes. So I wanted to kind of just give you a quick idea of some of the things that we're looking at. And one thing that we do always take into consideration, of course, is how can we be more efficient without significantly affecting our product and the service that we provide to our students? My job could be very easy if we didn't care what happened in the classroom, if you came in and said, we want you to cut expenditures by 10%, and I go to Bob and say, okay, here's my teacher we have to cut. It's not that simple. So everything that we do, obviously, we're always taking the effect on the classroom into consideration. So this is a quick just picture of what our expenditures look like. What I'm talking to you tonight about is general fund expenditures. Certainly, we have other funds, but this is what is in the FIBR forecast, what we're really looking at. That graph there shows the, when you're looking at the FIBR forecast or the SM two report that I'll go through and I present every month, we have expenditures and then we have and other items, that's kind of another line below that. This excludes those, so this does not include your transfers to your PI fund or any of that, it's just strictly general fund expenditures. Obviously, we're looking at the transfers, but for purposes of this discussion, you know, there's been so much work already into the PI expenditures, there was, you know, you did a really thorough review on what you want to be spending out of that fund and to be included in this report here, which can be redundant, so. We have had an actual average increase from 14 to 19, you'll see there's 3.2%.
Right here, over that.
That's an average annual increase.
Okay.
Yeah, that's an average annual increase of 3.2. Our projection right now is an average annual increase of 3.4. And we'll go through what some of those increases are in a few minutes, but those are projections. So, and I say this, and I know I sound like a broken record, because I say it over and over when I talk about FIBR forecasts and things like that, you know, the most, the closest year, we're the most accurate. Further out we get, the more assumptions we're making and the more unknowns there are, so the number, the uncertainty gets larger. Certainly, we make projections in a conservative manner. We try to be as accurate as possible, but when there is something that's uncertain, I tend to err on the side of being conservative. What we don't want to happen is to say we're in really great shape, I'm only going to spend this much money, and then something happens, and then we have to come to you or we have to go to our taxpayers or our community and say, we were way off, we, our funds are way lower than we expected. We don't want that to happen.
So that's your way of saying our projected increase is probably higher than what the actual will be when we come to the end.
I always hope it's higher. I always hope that it's higher. You know, things like healthcare, you know, that one's a dark.
Things that are out of our.
Right, things that, and these are the types of things that we're going to look at and see if we can slow this growth. We can't eliminate growth. I mean, it just, it doesn't happen, it's not possible. We have, you know, inflation happens, we still have to buy the same things, if the prices are higher, the prices are higher. So there are areas where we can look at these things and see if we can slow this growth down, that's what we do.
Before you leave that, I just really quickly looked up, the inflation rate from 19 to 20 is 2.5%. So our growth is just a little bit greater than the rate of inflation.
Right, and if you're looking at this, if you're looking at just from the 19 to 20 years, kind of where I thought you were going to go with that, the growth for 2020 projected is 4.6. I think, I already think that that's high. Budgets were done before I got here, but I do think we are over budgeted in some areas, and I'll show you some of those too.
So that get adjusted in May?
Yes, yeah. We can do that sooner if we choose, I mean, given other items that we're discussing and other things that we're looking at, I can certainly, we can, we can update that.
Yeah.
So let me ask you, certainly looking at percentage increase of total expenditures, that's about, that's about as global as we can possibly get. So when you're, right, I mean, that's as high a level as we can possibly get. So when you're actually looking for, setting you up, it's like, so when you're looking for cost reduction ideas, what kind of different metrics do you look at to certain like global percentage increase?
Right.
That's the biggest peanut butter knife you can get, we gotta get small.
So, and part of that is what we started the discussion on in October, when I brought a presentation on all the different things we can measure ourselves on. And, you know, we talked total expenditures, we talked year-over-year growth, which is what I'm going to try to cover here tonight, comparisons to other school districts, percentages and ratios of what's going to the classroom versus building operations versus administration and things like that. Those are all things that we, we measure ourselves on. In order to affect those, where we start is just total expenditures. How do I slow the growth? Well, I have to stop the expenditure increasing, so I'm looking at total dollars. What are we spending and where are there areas where we might find ways to be more efficient and to maybe not cut expenditures necessarily, but maybe stop the increase?
Well, right, then I mean, there's fixed variable expenditures, so the P is to like try to identify the variables and the flex. I mean, in a business, you have to flex to your sales line, in a school, you have to flex to, you know, your customers.
Your students and the, and the quality of product that you work with.
Sure, and I think, you know, actually, as you say, you can see that from a balance control and what's on our radar that's variable in terms of our ability to watch it, manage it, try to create efficiency.
Yeah, I mean, there's, you know, this, this discussion here at the board level, there's the cabinet discussions that we have, all the way down to every single purchase order that comes through, we're reviewing. And depending on who's in that conversation, you know, when I'm talking purchase orders, teachers are in that, secretaries are in this conversation, they're, they're going and shopping and really fresh shopping, not just doing what's easiest, you know, what can I do to really stretch my budget? And it's, it's a culture and it's the whole district. So to, so to your point about what, what can we affect here, when I start to look at expenditures, the easiest things sometimes, or the things that seem the easiest, can't really do for a lot. So when you look at our expenditures as a whole, we, you know, I show you this pie chart regularly, salaries and benefits is the majority of our expenditures, we know that, we expect it. And those do grow. We have raises for our staff, we have step, step increases for experience, and then we have column changes for education. So that, those are items that are already, I can't affect change on, I can't change with the raises for next year, that's already negotiated. Those are, those are things that we've, we've sat down at the table with our people and decided this is what's best for not just, you know, the teacher in the room, it's what's best for our students, because this is the staff that we want here, educate our kids. So that's not something that I can, I can affect there, but that's where I start. So we're going to start with, and we're going to present this, I'm going to present this as it appears in the FIBR forecast, and we're just going to go down through the lines. So looking at, starting with salaries, that's your first line on the FIBR forecast, first line in the SM two, there's a picture of what it has looked like, the average annual increase was 3.2%, which is interesting, because that's what our overall increase was, which, you know, makes sense, 80% of our expenditures are related to this, 59% are, or 54% are salaries, but then you have the benefit portion in there too. So.
Does that, the salary, how like, what level do you go down to, like, if you go down to like, if you retire a little bit, your teachers.
We do, in the FIBR forecast model, we, we have number of teachers, number of custodial staff, number of maintenance, number of bus drivers, and so on. We'll take in average salary for that, what the model does is we, I estimate an average salary for that class of employees, how many I've got, and then what my highest people said, like, when I'm calculating teacher retirements, they are, you know, making 120% of the average. And then we're going to bring in, expected, when we bring in a young teacher, they're only 80% of the average. So it does calculate that, it's taking out the higher salary, it's bringing in the lower salary.
By use of like an average wage or?
It starts out with an average wage, yes, and then as I continue to add those. Now, one thing that I will go down to a little bit more detail next year in doing the FIBR forecast, is taking every individual person who we're currently employing, taking their salary, what their benefits are and all of that. Right now, because of where was that coming in, I was taking somebody else's work, kind of going from there.
So it's going to be a group perspective now, but going forward, the next forecast, you expect to do on like a per head count basis?
And it is, the model does do per head count. It's just, I don't have, what I will make the model do is I'll take what my actual salary is going to be, and I don't think it works. The way it works though is just estimating, you know, I have 100 teachers, my average teacher salary is 7.5, when a teacher leaves, they're making 100 and they will compensate 50. Those are not real numbers, they're just generated. So then I can say, you know what, I, we have several this year who are of retirement age. I've heard of, you know, two who are going to retire by the time it all shakes out, I think we're probably going to have four, and then I'll, I can put that into the formula. So I had sidetracked there a little bit. So our projected increase for the next five years is expected to remain at 3.2.
Per head counts, I mean, that's wage rate, what about head count number? That's the other.
That's certainly one of those factors. And that is something that we're looking at as a cabinet all the time, the enrollment certainly makes that determination. I, I can come to you and say, you know, yeah, cut a teacher, but, or we have, we're reducing 30 kids next year because the classes coming in is, you know, 30 smaller than the class that's going out, that they're distributed, they're not, you can't just cut one teacher based on that. So yes, that is part of the discussion and that's part of the analysis, always, is head count. This graph however, is just, this is dollars.
So pure dollars for 3.2, is that all wage, how much is each, how much is wage, how much is head count?
This, I can't give you that, I would have to find that, that's not something that I know offhand. Wages are, it's not, because it's not just the salary increase, like I said, it's a step, and then it's the column changes as well, so those have to be estimated as well. I don't know for sure how many people are going to move up to a masters or move up to a masters plus 30 or whatever step they're, or column they're moving to. That make sense? And it's all dollars, it's just.
I understand.
Yeah, yeah, I can.
I don't understand the variance analysis, but I understand that.
Okay. I have the charts and I have all the data going into it, I can certainly pull it for you, which is, I know, no one's sitting here. So one of the things, you can, one of the things that we look at when we're, when we're assessing our salaries and wages, isn't just our total dollar amount. I'm not just looking at this total spend each year and saying, yep, we're good, we stayed within our percentage. We're looking at our efficiency, we're looking at our salaries compared to other districts, we're looking at our administrator salaries, our number of people. Is there some way that some district found a way to do two jobs with maybe one and a half people, you know, restructuring, moving things around, we're all kind of different. We have a lot of similarities, but if you went in central office for every district in the area, we have different positions. So through my organizations and my discussions with treasurers, or treasurers, certainly, I know Bob has his groups with the superintendents, they had those discussions, we heard earlier, Becky talking about, you know, their groups, those, these are things we're all kind of always looking at. This is just something I wanted to show you, to show you that our, our salaries are not as a whole out of whack. We're not, certainly they're growing 3.2%, I would expect most of the districts in the area are growing at probably the same rate. We're not the highest paid teachers in the area, we're not the highest paid administrators in the area, we don't have the most administrators, you know, we're not top heavy there. We're not, we don't have, like, if you look at Orange has 23 administrators and this number, this all comes from the CUP report. So when, when that CUP report comes out every year, that's like, we're digging into that immediately. So this is just one of the things that we look at, this is not a cost cutting measure, I just like to present it and show you. This is just kind of like that reasonableness test that you look at.
Can you pause there for a second?
Absolutely.
So not only are we not the highest, we're one of the lowest average salary. So what would you say to a community member who says, you have too many administrators or you're assuming public issue? Because that's, obviously that stands out a little bit, and there are reasons why, but what would your answer be?
Well, I would ask them to look at that bottom line there, the number of students per administrator. We're not the lowest there, certainly, we don't have the lowest level of responsibility, which means we don't have the most number of administrators, it's not just about the number of administrators, it's, it's about what's calculated in there as well. You know, I, we could manipulate that number and say, you know what, we don't have 17 administrators, because we're not going to call this person, this person, this person administrator, it's all EMIS data.
So even this, like, you haven't adjusted it, make it apples to apples, it's just raw data?
It's data from there, but that's why you have to look at and compare, you know, for example, if you look at the previous years or other years, maybe our, if our administrator number is lower, our average salary is probably higher, because some of those lower supervisor slash administrators may not have been included in the administrator number, maybe they were supervisors.
And it's also EMIS code.
Right, it's all EMIS.
When I went through this with Ash, I'm like, I can't count 17, I can't.
Yeah, I'm trying to get 17.
I can't get to that number.
So I shouldn't look at this data insignificant?
No, no, it's not insignificant, insignificant at all, I don't think so.
You can use it as generalization.
I just think you can't just look at one number, you have to look at all of them. You can't just say, well, Sugarin has 17 administrators and Beachwood only has 11. Well, Beachwood, their average salary on those 11 is $124,000, our average salary on our 17 is 70, so somebody that we're calling an administrator, they're not. You need to look at all of the data together, you can't just pick one line and make, make a call on it.
Sure. I'm just trying to understand which information is valid and which isn't, so we're discrediting the information, so I'm trying to understand which stuff is valid.
And I don't mean, I don't mean to discredit it, I just am trying to explain that you have to pull in all of the information when you're looking at it, because we are all different and, yeah, certainly, every one of these districts, if it's specifically said we want superintendent treasurer and principals, we can do that, and that can be, you know, that would look a lot different than what this does, but that's why you have to like, or I could just, I could just come in here and say, well, look, the CUP report says that our average salary for our administration is 70,000, we're the lowest paid, when in actuality, that may not be true.
So what I'm hearing is there's an opportunity to take this analysis and spend more time with it, defining what we consider administrators, and then trying to look at some of these districts feel like we have access to that information without taking EMIS or CUP report into consideration.
Go through.
I could, I certainly could. I think this gives you a general picture, I don't know that that is necessary if you're just looking for a general picture. Are we, I think this, this points out we're not overpaid, we're not overstaffed, I don't think we're understaffed.
I like to believe, I'd like to believe that, but I'm not sure with the data.
Which?
I mean, I mean, I'd like to believe that, I mean, I, I just, I just don't know how to, I don't know how to read it, I don't know if it's apples to apples, it doesn't sound, so, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do.
What to feel good, what to feel bad about.
I do.
I think this comes back to, I think it was back in November, when you did that.
I think this comes back to, I think it was back in November, when you did that great presentation for us about, what do we measure, how are we going to measure, what's important? So maybe this is an area where we can decide internally, what has that enough value that we would ask your, you know, your staff to spend that amount of time on, certainly that requires a big influx of time. Don't you think fellas, this is, this is an area where we need to decide as a board, how are we, how do we want to be able to measure ourselves against these comparables? And is it worth time now for Ashley to go in, you know, to each district's EMIS data and figure out how to make it more honest to our staff?
I don't have access to each district's EMIS data, I don't have to get it from the district.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I see what we do.
That's what you have, I mean, you're, what you're saying is exactly, she can paint these broad brush pictures based on this data, and we have different systems to help analyze that.
Right.
But if you say, this is a metric that you really want to judge us by, you're going to have to call every one of those districts and say, okay, what do you have where, what are their salaries?
Yep.
And so I think that's true, if, we can paint broad brush in a lot of the different areas, and Ashley has access to that, but it's also not only what the data is out there, how they reported it, who they reported where.
Right.
So I wouldn't over invest or under invest.
Even that wouldn't, I don't believe would be completely apples to apples, because I can say, you know what, Orange has an assistant superintendent that makes, you know, 125. We have an assistant superintendent that makes 100, but maybe their responsibilities are completely different. Maybe West G has somebody that they have labeled as an assistant superintendent who's really a director of curriculum. You know, it really, it, I don't even think even doing that is going to get you completely apples to apples now.
You also have districts where administrators, you know, a lot of them work 260 days, but some only work 180.
Right. Yeah, there are so many variables, I, I don't want you to think it's not worth comparing ourselves to other districts, I think it's worth, it's certainly worth comparing ourselves, but I don't want to tell you I can ever get exactly apples to apples, except superintendent to superintendent, treasurer to treasurer.
Right. I mean, in my opinion, I don't want to tell you what to measure, I don't want to tell you what slides to show me, I don't want, I'd like from your opinion to be able to like, put up slides like, listen, this is data that I think is meaningful, you know, because I'm governing a budget of $30 million a year, so I'm, Bob and I are governing a budget of $30 million a year, these are the metrics that we think are, you know, meaningful, and this is why this data is meaningful.
Right.
And I think it can drive us in the right direction, and I think it points us to reduce this, and this, and this.
Right.
Do you know the data far better than I do?
Right.
I don't want to give you the answer, I want you to make recommendations.
And this isn't, this isn't something that I would say, if I had pulled this data up, and all of these districts had average teacher salaries of 75 to 85, and our average teacher salary was 100, then I would say we need to look at something. This is just general, kind of, I don't think we're completely out of whack in our salaries. Now, in then looking at how we can reduce salaries, now we are not necessarily reduce salaries, but reduce the growth of those salaries, now we look at, how many people do we have, how many, what responsibilities do we have, is there anywhere where we can streamline services, streamline something? That's, this isn't getting to that, this is just, here's where I start.
Yeah, no, I understand. Personally, I'd rather see like a 15 minute presentation on three slides, these are meaningful data that I think, and these are cost reductions we can go through.
I didn't use the 15 minutes. Let me get there.
I'm not saying you have to do it 15 minutes right now, but, I mean, you know, instead of looking at data and discrediting the data, I'd rather, I'd rather have...
Right, and again, I don't mean to discredit it at all.
That's what she was saying, is we're aligned on that.
Yes, well, I think that's where I'm at here. This is just, yeah, I think this is valuable information, I think when someone looks at that graph and sees our salaries going up, and if that's the only thing they're looking at, they want to know, whoa, what's happening? And I, I want to be able to point out, and I think that it's important for us as a board to understand, I think it's important for our community to understand, we're not out of whack, we're not giving away the farm, we're, you know, we're doing, we're spending money on our salaries and we just responsibly. And that's really all I was trying to get at there. All right, so, hang on. So a few things that we are looking at, in the instructional staff, certainly that's something that we look at all the time, we're looking at enrollment weekly, as enrollment declines, we have to look at areas where we can, we can reduce if possible. Right now, based on enrollment, we're looking at potentially reducing one FTE for next year. That's not going to need to be a risk, we expect to absorb that through, through attrition. So right now, where we're at, looking at enrollment, we do expect to go down one FTE. Also, here is, just, I'm not going to rate it to you, but because of the declining enrollment, we have fewer teachers needing to pick up in the high school for sixth class. So that, that's going to result in some reduced expenditures as well. Looking at the non-instructional staff, so far this year, there was a comprehensive audit done of all of those aides, of the educational aides. As a result of that audit, we're looking at a reduction of two positions, again through attrition. And then based on IEPs and what comes out in the next year, again, this isn't something that I can just come to you and say, yes, you need to reduce aides if next year the IEPs looked a lot different, certainly we have to make decisions based on that.
Is there a threshold for instructional staffs, so at the high school level? We do, we've been adding classes, we don't typically get rid of classes, is there a threshold where we say, below this number of students, we're not going to...
No.
I think that's the level that we need to be getting at to understand, it's never going to be enrollment decline 30 people, so now we can lose one teacher, we need to hold...
Well, it is that way at the elementary.
Right, but at the high, but at the high school...
At the high school, we've never had, and one of the things I would put on the list is set a, set a benchmark, so we're not going to offer a class of, boy, if you have less than 15 students, you don't run a class. That's not something the board has ever required or done, because then you run into a hard program, and that is not going to be an access. But we don't offer everything that we are, and the numbers aren't, they don't make sense, we won't offer it. It's not like we have things to offer, I don't think a lot of times we would cut, and have classes based on student. Some of it's, you know, if we're offering a new course, I would even tolerate it or a number and expect growth out of that course. And so, if somebody asked me, would you offer a course to seven students? Maybe if it was the first year, and you just are trying to, you know, feed up, would I want it to be 10, 15, 20 a year? Yes.
So is that analysis that's done at the building level, is our principal at the high school looking at trend data of enrollment for these classes?
So every year, the master schedule is done, first week of March, I mean, they make recommendations on sections, and they offer things to, for, I mean, both middle school and high school president together, is there someone shared staff there, and I'll give you a reference on those staff recommendations. That's why, that one FTE, that's an elementary recommendation, secondary, I don't know, for, by no means.
Well, and how does the, so the sixth class, they're already compensated for DAC, that's a, no, we, we, it's a stack, right?
Yeah.
I think, for me, the bottom line in that conversation is that, the variety of programs that we offer at the high school, does cost us money.
No question.
It does cost us to provide that type of choice for the students, and there may be a time when we need to really reflect on, do we keep bickering and bickering, or do we focus in on core, and what would that mean for processing?
Yeah, it goes back to that, it would be very easy for me to tell you how it costs.
I guess that's what I would say, some misconception, we haven't added staff in the second year, or, at least, I don't know, five or six years. We've managed high enrollment in that sixth class.
Right.
Like the, we certainly changed courses, things have gone, we've changed, offered different things, but I, I bicker FTE count fairly flat.
No, I agree, I applaud you, I think you've done a really nice job of increasing the variety without having a big impact on the budget, but there's certainly an upper limit to that.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
And then if there was any type of an expectation, like if we nailed a levy for a couple, and we really had to be cut, we might have to reduce program in, in order to really affect, you know, headcount. I don't want to speak out of it, but I'm just...
I'll, I mean, I'll give you an example of conversation about right now, because we're going to go with that program, it's come up a couple of different times, that might be when we have to move towards a better of your offering, and we may have to cut back. So those conversations happen every year.
Also, in the non-instructional staff, we are currently looking at some of the independent purchase services that we, that we purchase on a purchase service basis versus employees. So those are things that we're, we're looking at. This is, I don't want to give the impression, and maybe I didn't introduce this properly, I'm just giving an update of what we're looking at, I don't want you to think that, to come to the end of this and be like, she didn't tell us what to do. I, that was not, that was my intention, just to give you an update, let you know the types of things that we're looking at, and kind of the direction that we're going. Okay, so, moving to employee benefits, which will be the next slide. This is the next largest portion of our expenditures related directly to our staff, represents about 20% of our expenditures. Much of it is in SERS and STRS, there's, there's nothing we can, we can touch. Medical benefits however, a large portion of this line, we do have some control over that. There were changes made, you can move to the next slide. Yeah, there were changes made, which you're seeing some significant savings there. I don't know that we would recommend any additional plan changes in the next go around, but what we are looking at is the possibility, we're starting, we have an insurance committee next week, and we're going to start discussions on the possibility of moving to a self insured model, instead of a fully insured model. With the history that we've had in our experience, in our, our medical plan over the last several years, if that were to continue, and again, we don't know exactly what's going to happen, but we could save some money definitely by going to a self insured program, or a self insured plan. So that's something we're going to explore and see, we're going to talk to consultants and see if, you know, they agree with us that that is something that we can save some money on, and if it's, if it's a good move for us, we're going to look at that, it might be a way to reduce the growth of this line.
Can you go back one slide?
Sure.
So, and I know that Orange is projections, so, but like, okay, so we made the changes to healthcare, and, so this, when was the first year that that went in, really this year?
19, that's where you see that little dip there.
Yes, okay, but, I'm like, the growth curve is growing still, so is it the SERS, STRS, or are you projecting?
So SE and ST, the percentage is not growing, but as your salary increases, that, those just, those go up. And medical benefits, yeah, and, to, again, be conservative, you don't, you know, standard, industry standard, you're getting reports anywhere from 8 to 12% a year. We've been very lucky and that has not affected us.
So for the time being, we have slowed the growth in our healthcare expenses, but...
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, we, yeah, this, you know, I say we, although I wasn't here, but we've done a pretty good job of, of looking at it and not just, yeah, we're going to redo the plan and move on, you know? If that was what had happened, you know, certainly that, you'd see those orange bars would be, you know, starting at a higher pace and increasing at a higher.
What is the growth rate happening at?
Um, I believe on the medical, I have, eh, or eight?
The other thing to consider, from behind the board, we did extend our plan through January of next year, and we were wanting to take it back into this evaluation of fully version self insured.
Right, so we, we got the zero percent, and we were able to get that for a 12 month, or a 14 month plan instead of 12. So then going into the future, we'll be starting with a January plan, and then that gives us a little bit more time to evaluate the self insured option, and see if that's something we want to, we want to pursue. Moving on to purchase services. So this is an area where the growth is not huge, in the next few years, we're not projecting that to be extremely large, however, over the last five years, it has grown significantly. And I know that when you're looking at that pie chart and you say, okay, this is the first, this is the first slice of the pie, and it's not people, this is where we're going to, this is where I can make change. At first glance, yes. However, a large portion of this piece of the pie, and I know again, I have a broken record, are things that are out of our control. So there are a lot of things in here that come straight out of our foundation, and we can't touch it. So, go ahead, move to the next slide. The way this table is set up is, I'm showing you the 15 spending, and then the projected spending for this year, then the increase over the period. So, the top here, Peterson and autism scholarships, these are things that come straight out of our foundation, this is increase that is not something that I can go make a change and come to you and say, cut something. There's, there's nothing we can do about that. It's just more children taking those scholarships. And then as you go down, we have a little bit more control, that's kind of how I arranged the table. Next item, post-secondary ed is what it used to be called, now it's college credit class, that's doubled over the last couple of years. That is something that, yes, we're offering here, if we didn't offer it here, kids could still go just campus.
Just one class here, right?
They can still go to another school.
That's, that's a conversation on the education side we have, is, you know, do you offer more, and if you do, it's a funding issue that we have to address.
Or as more are going off campus and utilizing CCP, again, that's...
That number's not off campus, that's all, that's when you make the decision, you increase that much when you make a decision off of course.
How many pays for it when they go off campus, the state or...
No, we still, we have very few students that are student.
So between 15 and 20, the increase was due to us offering it internally, it would be interesting to see the breadth of the external, just for picks in a board report at some point.
Well, and I suspect that that, the number that take it off, or online, is growing and will continue to grow, because we talk, they talk about it more and more at high school.
I'll pull the number, you'd be surprised, and, you know, it used to be PSEO, it's been around forever, to go off, our numbers have always been very low when kids want to go high school here. This was, and we knew this, when we went down this direction, it would be a cost of, sometimes we hear, why don't we expand it, why don't we have more courses, there's one, certification issues with staffing, to get them certified, and then two, there's the natural pain for tuition buy.
Moving to the next line, vocational education tuition, this is an item that, again, has almost doubled, oh, no, no.
There you go.
Back, yeah, thanks. Over which we don't have a lot of control, we have to, and this is money that comes straight out of our foundation, so that goes straight over to the school where the student is attending. Could we look at that number, could we offer something else here? No, not at that cost, you know, certainly we could offer more programs, we could offer every program that's possible, but, but back to the conversation we were having earlier, it's not cost efficient.
And just to be clear, those are special education students identified, and either serviced at CEBAC or transitioning most of those students to JALD County. So can that number drop, sure, is it jay-z out, 21, we service them, you know, through 21, it's just a matter of somebody else filling that gap, or when those things come.
That is just a sound check as well, students are... Students are going to a, if it's a cell tech program, not in our district. Also, looking at utilities, that's gone up $60,000 over the last few years. Don't have a whole lot of control over that. Certainly our, we have to keep the buildings safe or under, I, gas prices are what they are, don't have control over those. Electricity, we do have some control over. Can we implement, you know, more policies, more switches that turn the lights off automatically, that kind of thing? Yeah, but this is just kind of an example.
Which we do, right?
Yeah, we have several. I don't know that we have in every single area, though. I see, I see lights on sometimes. Another item, the SRO. You know, in 15, that was non-expensionary. This is a decision that we've made. It's an additional $40,000. So when you're looking at growth, and I go down through every single line item, you know, that's one that jumps out. But that's a decision, it's a choice for me. Next is a very large one, special education tuition programs and services. In 15, it was 687,000, and this year, we're looking at 1.1 million, so it increases $400,000. This, we do have some control over in choosing programs and, you know, deciding what's best for the student. Certainly in some areas, we have to look at, would it be more cost efficient to educate the child in our own district, employ somebody, set up a classroom, you know, those kinds of things. And those are things that we're always looking at. This is also a direct result of more students. So this one, when this pops up and you look at this number, you know, that's the first one we look at. Why? That's a huge increase. And if you look at 15, the number of students we had versus the number of students we have now that require individualized services like that, it's, the number's almost doubled. So it makes sense that our expenditures have gone up. And again, those are, we have to educate every child, we do what's best for the child. And that's. SLP services, this is one that's gone up $93,000. That's speech language pathology, gone up $93,000 over the last five years. That's one that we're looking at. I don't have an answer for you. I don't know why. I don't know if it's just more students identified, if it's.
It's an addition, that's basically one additional staff. They want to get the case load, it was to be a requirement to be an additional SLP. Some of this we're looking at, some of it outsourced versus trying to source certain students' balances and on that right now. The problem is, there's also a shortage in SLP OT, so there is a pretty competitive market for those folks.
Also, product of.
How many students you have that need services? The health contract has gone from 68,000 to 156,000. In looking at this one on initial review, I noticed we, before, were only charging PSI to that, now we have PSI and Maxim. I don't know if there's any room for, if there's some overlap in those two contracts. I don't know, but these are the types of things that we're looking at and we're looking for answers on.
I think we have additional staff, too.
Well, you've got, there's a student in our district right now that's gone up 1, which is $45,000.
And then the facilities management contract has gone up 56,000 over the last five years. That's something that, as a team, we're certainly always looking at, trying to determine if that is the most cost efficient way to manage our facilities still.
Ashley, remind me of the 2020 $12 purchase services, this is about 3.1.
So this.
If I could go back one slide.
Yeah, 4.4. So if you look, if you added up all of these increases on that right column, that last column, it's 75% of the increase over the five years is just in these lines.
Right.
So, you know, this is where we start. Can I, can I reduce some of the other lines that, you know, are not included in here, we're not talking about? Maybe. And certainly I'm not saying we're not going to look at them, but that's not something that you're going to notice in the forecast. I'm not going to make a change there, and you're going to say, oh, we're going to reduce our expenditures. You're not going to notice that. These are the areas, this is 75% of our, of our increase, this is where we're looking.
See, I think that, I don't, I don't think we should be so quick to say that diminishing returns of 20% because there's going to be 20% in all of these brackets.
Right. And I'm not saying not looking at those lines. This came from an analysis of pulling up every individual line item and looking at history. It's all in one large spreadsheet and just going down through and just kind of what pops out, where to start.
Yeah.
This is where we start, this is where we're looking.
I just think, I think that what we're talking about may be lots of little, little 20 line items within these 20% brackets. I don't think any of us think that there's $3 million in one line item that we're going to say, oh, my gosh, why have we been spending that?
But I also appreciate that Ashley doesn't want to show us 15 line items. She's just trying to give us a bigger picture.
Okay, moving on to supplies and materials. So this is another area that has increased over the last few years. Power, this only represents 2.5% of our expenditures, so you can find all of it. We're still going to reduce the budget by 2.5%. It contains all of our classroom supplies. Textbooks is the largest expenditure in this line. And we have some large, you know, we've had deductions, where we're constantly buying new textbooks and that is, again, what we do, it's how we educate our kids. There's a large increase this year. I do not think that that number for this year is going to be 907,000. I think that was a little bit over the limit. I know that with the purchase order process and with, you know, I'm sending some things back, this is, this is one of those items where I alluded to earlier, that, you know, our staff really deserves a lot of credit because they, they're, they're trying to affect this line and they're doing their part. They are shopping around when I send something back to them and say, is this the lowest price? Now I'm kind of, I'm getting some that are just sending me the email as they put the first order in and saying, hey, I looked here, here, and here, and this is it. Like, don't send it back to me.
That's good, you're training.
Right, right. So, you know, they're, they're doing their part and they, they do deserve some credit for that. And I think that this line, when all of a sudden, then this year, I think that we'll be pleased this line is going to be a little bit lower.
If we bring it down to 200, I mean, and the objection is based off of 2020, so.
Right.
Yeah. And right there is a million dollars.
Right.
Are the constraints, the number of vendors even there?
Depending on the adoption, but if this is a big adoption, it really is a big adoption.
Oh, for textbooks? Were you talking general supplies?
Oh, no.
No, if they will give me a W9 and they will work within our, our process, I'll add this vendor. I don't say no to a vendor. We don't, you know, I don't like Office Max better than, I don't, we can't think of one damn store right now.
They still exist.
Right, yes, they, I don't, no.
Right, but that's a vendor like Amazon?
We use Amazon. We use Amazon. Part of the conversation, though, with Amazon is, and I've tried to get everybody to understand this, too. You put a first order out there for Amazon and you put a dollar amount in, and then two days later, once you get your first order, that dollar amount has changed, the price changes. Amazon, also, we get, half of the order comes in and the other half doesn't come with it. You know, when you're ordering things like books, you think you're getting new books and sometimes they come in and there's notes of margins. Returns with Amazon are impossible. So I've tried to kind of get everybody to really pay attention. Don't just look at that price, because while you may save $4 using Amazon over another vendor, the two hours that my staff goes back and forth with your secretary and all of that costs us way more than the $4. So it's trying to get everybody to really look at the whole picture and not just that dollar on that price tag. But certainly that price tag definitely matters and they know that and they are, they're looking at those items. So, move to the next slide. So initially, when I look at this, you know, I don't see that there's a whole lot of places where we can reduce in supplies, other than, you know, textbooks makes up the largest portion of it, and then our, our gas as well, gasoline. So I don't think that we're spending on supplies, I don't think that we're, you know, just out there buying willy-nilly. I think we have been very responsible over the years. I think that, I think we're lean. But that being said, we are holding budgets flat, so our budgets, I plan to hold flat for next year. We don't expect any of those to increase. And, you know, like I said, people are, are doing their part. We're looking at individual items, like you're talking about the 20% there. This is the area where we are looking at every day. So, and move to the next slide. Again, this was just to kind of give you an idea of the things that we're looking at. I know it's not something that we talk about often, it's something that we do often. This is part of, part of what I do every day, and I know part of what all of our administrators consider in making all of their decisions. I know that they're considering controlling our expenditures. In the spring, you know, Bob and I will bring together a more itemized list of, here's what we decided. Yep. We're wrapping it up.
Next slide.
Five minute timeout.
Absolutely.
All right, five minute timeout. Break it up at 10 till. It's dinner.
Thank you.
Should start packing dinner when I go to work, schoolwork days. You eat in the car, there's some, like, you're, how much you down now?
I don't know. Let's do this. Oh, yeah. It's all right.
I was just like, come on, man, isn't there a win in there somewhere? I could go. I mean, I gave you money or anything, but. Do we win anywhere? I'm sure that we're winning all the time, right? I was going to say, discriminating your porker might be the best thing we just didn't really do that. Who tells us it is bogus?
Play for everybody. Yeah. I think, you know, it's weird, I'm not totally there yet, though, because I guess it's just a plan and it's not, not contagious for sure. And the tissues are always close by, you know? I'm totally. I'm listening.
I have every scenario we've gone through in here, somebody wants to talk about it, but I did not want to present those again and talk about them again. So the last finance and budget committee meeting, we kind of pared it down to the idea of either going for just four mills and replacing what's going to be falling off of everybody's tax bill, so that it's, it's not a new tax, but a new additional tax, I guess. That would be four mills, either in general fund or PI or some combination thereof, would not get us very far. We would have to go back to the voters in probably two years. So, you know, that, that's kind of where the finance and budget committee does not want to go, have to go back to the voters, you know, every two years. But they really do like the idea of a levy that's not going to increase the taxes.
And it gets us off the presidential cycle.
Right. So that's the first page. Now, I apologize, if yours are out of order, I'm sorry. As I was coming here, I fell down the stairs, my stacks went everywhere. So I did try to rework them, and if yours is out of order, I apologize.
Ashley, can I get my backup for just a second?
Sure.
So with regard to the board finance and budget committee, you brought a lot of information to different scenarios, we kind of talked through it all. And as everybody knows, that committee includes some community members who are experts in accounting and finance. I think what, really the output of the couple of meetings that we had was, one, there is a need. We can't continue to provide the kind of excellent learning environment for our students without a levy. That's mostly due to House Bill 920, because our, our revenues are not growing fair enough. And then, two, that while that committee looked at a lot of the scenarios, I think it really was leaving it to the board as well.
Absolutely. It's definitely board decision.
Right. Just so it, having, it gave us that opportunity to flesh out some of the details and some of the pros and cons.
The pros and cons of, of the different options.
But then ultimately, the board, of course, will be making a decision about, you know, what makes sense. So we have the added value of these things having been kind of vetted and having some things brought up in committee and then you have to.
And certainly, that doesn't mean that if something hasn't gone through that committee that, you know, if the board says, hey, I want to see X, Y, and Z, you know, we can always, we can always look at, look at other scenarios. Right, what you, what I brought today is just, I just brought three pieces of paper based on those conversations for the committee or from the committee that we've had up to now, and then some request, additional requests from board members.
So I think the, the other thing that was, kind of came out of the committee for the board to consider is that the timing, it does look like, I think we talked about this in a previous board meeting as well, that this year is really the best time for us to bring that levy forward because there is that need. If we hold off, the need only becomes greater, it doesn't go away, and it starts to impact our levy cycle. So some good conclusions kind of came out of that. Now the ball's been kind of tossed in our court to work through the fine details of timing and amount, et cetera.
Yeah, so all of these scenarios, I know the first time we brought this to the board, we had some scenarios that were in different years, not necessarily passed in 2020. We're down to, at least from, from those committee discussions, these are all levies that would be this, this calendar year. And then, you know, timing, we would have to decide. But certainly, I want to be very clear, specifically asked for, but my recommendation as the treasurer is, we need to be on the ballot this calendar year. Okay, so any questions on that, the first scenario? This, this does look a little bit different from the first time I brought these to you because we were, I was asked to take it out past the five-year forecast, because we want to kind of see if we can, what it does to a levy cycle. We don't necessarily, I didn't have anything. We don't necessarily, I didn't have anything beyond 24 on the scenarios before. To be clear, the 25 and 26 are very, very simple estimates. I just took revenues, assumed in 25 and 26, same revenues for 24, I just took total. And then, for expenditures, I increased them, I believe, two and a half percent, assuming that we can make some change with some of the things that, that we talked about in my presentation a few minutes ago.
This assumes the bus garage to be...
So, yes, one of the things that I was requested to provide in these scenarios is to have the bus garage at 2 million in '21. This takes out Gurney STEM. I think before, I had a million in '21 and a million in '22. And then, Gurney STEM, I had, I don't remember if it was 22 or 23 of them, but that was another million dollars. That is not in here. So, you do see some lines on this, on this page for COPS financing. That was something that we've kind of been discussing at the committee level as well. These first two scenarios do not include any of that. This is just straight village, what would happen, where we would be if we passed mills.
So, just to clarify that, the master planning projects that are included are those that came as recommendations from capital planning and master planning committees, with the exception of the Gurney STEM project, because the idea was that we would seek support organization funding. Wasn't as pressing of a need, but certainly would add benefit to the students, but probably we would only pursue it if we were able to get significant funding from outside of our budget. So, it did make sense to put it in here as something that we're planning on, because I don't think we would do it if we didn't have support organization. So, that was the rationale behind that. So, the two, the two big projects are the tennis courts and the bus garage.
And then, everything else, one of those first two lines under expenditures are, are from the current plan. So, one thing I want to point out when you're looking at these, the very bottom line includes general fund and these facilities funds. We can adjust the amount in each bond by reducing the transfer, or passing mills in PI versus general fund. So, really, bottom line is, is what's most important.
Or increasing inside mileage.
Yeah, or moving it back.
Which would be more straightforward from ballot or something?
Moving in.
Well...
That would be on the ballot.
Right. Suppose we've decided that 7.9 is the total number, and the conversation becomes, is some of that PI and some of that operating? It's actually more straightforward on the ballot if 7.9 is operating and the board moves inside mileage.
It's straightforward, maybe, but you have to think too about the control that they're giving you. I know some, some voters may want, I want this to go toward facilities. I don't want to give you the option to give your entire staff, you know, an 8% raise and not maintain buildings in my child's... Just not that you would do that, but...
No, do you think that, how much time that's why? Do you think that outweighs the complication of explaining about eleven?
I don't. I don't. I think, you know, I think this district has put a lot of work into our facilities plan and communicating that. I think, I think we've done a pretty good job of educating everybody on, look, this is the amount of money we need, this is why. And I think if we were to pass mills that goes straight in there, I think it, it shows them our commitment to, look, we're not, this, we're not just saying we need this money so that you can put in our general funds that we can be working on with it. We want an PI, we need an PI. I, I think it, I don't think that's so difficult.
No, and I mean, I like that, it, it does, it shows, since we last spoke with you, we've done all of this work, this is what we need, this is how it's going to be well taken care of. And then, it does take some pressure off of the general fund down the road, if there's a dedicated funding stream going toward facilities. Just another benefit.
Yeah, certainly then we would be able to analyze, do we need to make that transfer? Or, at some point, do we move some of that inside mileage back? Okay, so...
Ashley, just, what is the 2.34?
So, okay, so, so moving on to the next one. You're on the next one.
No, he's still, I'm just, I'm a little confused about the deduction of the 2.34 and then, is that...
Yeah, you're on the next one. You're on the 5.9.
It's an inside mileage, right?
We were still on the 4.0. Okay. There, yeah, so I'm on the next one. Okay, so, I was asked to see what it would look like if we did a combination levy, 5.9 in operating, two mil levy in PI, and if we transferred another 0.34 mils of inside mileage from general over to PI.
This is the hybrid one we were just talking about.
Yes, so that's, I had to add another column there, because I didn't want it to just, I didn't want to just work it in with the levy, and I didn't want to put it, I wanted to, to make it clear that that was transferring inside mileage.
So, I, I asked for this scenario, and the reason is, I wanted to see if we could achieve a 7.9 mil levy that still gives us the four-year cycle, still allows us to do the bus garage, and allows us to start building a little bit of a balance in our PI fund, and this is like 130,000 a year, I think.
Or 90.
Or 90.
That one actually would continue to grow, because it's inside mileage.
Right.
So, that does go up in front of the value.
Just to get, like, here's the, like, the study state budget. Okay. So, the idea being, can we get enough in the PI fund for the 2 million a year that we know we need, and then start to build a little bit more, even if it's 100,000 to 200,000 a year, that we're saving for projects at the high school that are going down the road? So, it's without a COOP, it's, you know, what would happen if we just absorbed this ourselves? How does that affect our levy cycle? What did you, what did you come up with?
So, if you look at the bottom line there, if you, if this were to pass in 2020, and then moving on, so the, moving the 0.34 is, is, it's a zero effect on the bottom line, it's just moving in.
Right.
So, it's still passing 7.9 mils. I would most likely, if, again, everything in our five-year forecast is, is close to what we're forecasting, I would be coming to you probably in '24 saying, we need, we need a, we need six...
Four-year, so it'd be a four-year levy.
Now, we are, we would have to increase our transfer in '21, if you, if you look there, if we, if we paid the full 2 million out on the bus garage in '21, we would not have enough.
Right.
It'd just be moving.
Right.
But, bottom line is...
But in, in the four-year cycle, you know, whether that money comes out in year one or in year three, it's not a big deal. That's why I thought it would be better just to put it all together, and we said, let's try to get the bus garage.
Yeah, and that's why I only brought three, because I did have, you know, 15 different versions of this, based on what we changed the transfer and what we...
Right. We can take all that.
Right. Yeah, and those are decisions we would, we would make as, as we went. Which is what it could look like.
So, Steve, so you've been taking, so at one point, we're talking about putting, taking the full, like, four mils into PI and moving the inside mileage back. We're going away from that.
I don't know that we're going away from it. This is what I was asked to prepare. 7.9, whether it's four or two in PI, the bottom line effect is the same. I think if we were to do the four, then, you know, then we would get rid of the transfer we wouldn't need it. And, that may be something that when we're deciding, if we decide we need 7.9, now we're going to decide how we will split that up. That four might be a better discussion, and might be easier to understand. That might be where we say, okay, the four mils that's going into the PI is what's falling off right now. So, you're going to see the 5.9, you will see in your taxes, but the four that's going into the PI, we have approximately four mils falling off.
And that's why I like that, because you're saying, here's something that has more building, taking it out, applying to more building stuff for PI to maintain us than the...
I, I wonder, though, if we look at most of our similar districts, you know, most people have the mils going to PI, but they're usually one, one and a half, two. I, I don't know if there's any other districts that have four mils going to PI. And once it goes to PI, I mean, it's permanent, right? I mean, so...
Yeah.
So, someday, we might have the problem, you know, way, way down the road, where it's at a cost that, oh, we have too much at PI. Well, you can save it for the next construction project, though, so, you know, you're...
Is this, would you then pull the inside mils back up to...
If, yeah. I assume you could do it after the bus garage, I just don't know.
Could we pause for a minute on the concept of not needing the lease purchase agreement? That's kind of what I want to start with. It looks to me like we can achieve a four-year cycle with 7.9 mils, however we decide to split it up, without doing the strategic participation. So, that's really good news.
As a taxpayer, because, you know, I prefer the COPS personally.
Yeah.
Because I'm giving you less money upfront.
Right, but we're, but it costs the district more, the district just takes an out loan, which ultimately costs you more money.
Yeah, but I guarantee you, if I vote for 8.9 or 7.9, I guarantee you an additional bill.
This is 7.9.
I know, but this also takes you off the presidential side, it's your five, eight, six years.
I'm sorry.
Go back to the next one.
We started on the COPS, so I started to...
I guess what I wanted to stay at this level on was, if we could achieve our goals with facilities and our goals with our operating budget without undertaking an additional debt instrument in the COOP, you know, I, I think it's probably worth discussing that first, because it looks to me like we can. So, why would we want to take on, and you might want to, you may have some reasons why you think the COOP makes a lot more sense than, than this.
But, to me, the reason you take on the COOP is you pay it off over twenty years. Therefore, you can provide more programming, of course, if you do it this way, right? You're, you know, you're just, you're paying like it's, you're paying for the bus garage to all of us.
Oh, right.
And it's like, this is something that's like, something that's like 2 million to 3 million, it's not that you normally get a PI out of your operating budget, unless we start building up our PI fund, and so if you haven't done that yet. Ideally, eventually, when we build up our PI fund, we wouldn't need a COOP, because we don't have the money.
Right, right, that's the beauty of having a COOP.
Therefore, if the COOP is the way, you can still use it.
Well, the, it's a small amount, it's a complicated instrument to explain to people. You know, it's, it's not something that is known or understood widely, so it's another thing we're going to have to explain to people about why we're doing it. And to me, that, the complexity of the message, and already the things we're dealing with with bringing something to the voters in a presidential election year, makes it a really unattractive thing. It would have to be so beneficial on the low interest, the low, you know, payments back, to make it worth it for me. And, and all we really need is 2 million dollars. I would also echo, Craig, you were at the last, you were at the last meeting, right? The Finance Committee, and the reaction of the people in the room that aren't on the board to the instrument was so overwhelmingly negative, that it made me feel like it would, it would be an extra hurdle. I think they were skeptical. They just, you know, they didn't know what it was, they were immediately skeptical of it, right? It's a negative.
Right, okay.
It's a skeptical...
Yeah, it certainly...
Yeah, it, it's certainly something we need to educate on. I think this is something we definitely want to be transparent about, and make sure that everybody understands it. Maybe it's not something that we do, if we go this route, maybe it's not something we do in this year with the levy. Maybe we say, hey, by the way, you know, we still have these, some of these needs out here, and then maybe next year, decide, do we want to go with a COOP?
The other thing about the COOP that makes me hesitant to use it is, all of this work has been towards building permanent improvement stream, so that we have the funds we need going forward. And the COOP is eating into those funds today, so that sooner or now down the road, we could be back in the same situation of not having the funds we need and less debt ability.
That just depends on how big of a COOP we do, because maybe you do enough improvements at the number ten two anymore.
Well, and that's where I'm like, yeah, but if you don't, if you don't need it...
That's a whole other analysis that we have to...
Right, well, that's where I could go back to, if you don't need it, why do we have that? I, and I, I agree, of course, why I want to say, on transparency, we are looking at the next, we're looking at our five-year forecast, and we're certainly looking at over a levy cycle, what we think we need. So, with regard to if we were to ever do a COOP instrument, if we have any intention of doing it in this levy cycle, then I think we need to communicate that to the voters. So, that would be one. I don't want it to be something that people vote for a PI levy, and then they think, oh, you might, you know, do something I didn't maybe we were going to do with it. And then, on, on the master planning, and we've had such a robust process, where we've spent so much time in understanding what we need and when we need it. And I think what we need is on this page. We need the tennis courts, we need the bus garage, and then further down the road, we know we have additional needs that are coming to us. But, in a, in the planning, I wouldn't want to change the plan, because there's potential to get money sooner, because the plan told us when things needed to happen.
I'm not advocating for COOP.
I know, I'm not expressing this well, but I guess I'm saying...
You're looking, I'm not...
Right. If there was a need to frontload some of those projects, I think it would have come out through the planning process, and then we would be sitting here saying, okay, we need 5 million, or we need... But I think what came out of that was, we need two and a half million, and we... And 2 million annually for maintenance, two and a half for facility master planning projects, and then the 2 million annually. And I think we've built something here with a 7.9 mil levy that allows us to do that, to get through the next, you know, four years, and what we need to do with our facilities.
But I do want you to look at those, that bottom line, it is tight.
Yeah.
I mean, it's something...
Plus that million dollars, you're going to bring us supplies and materials, and then it's to change.
Plus, I also worry that that 2 million could easily be two and a half.
Right. We have to manage all of that, and I think, you know, there's some contingency money in the PI, you know, plan, and we might have to, you know, hold back on some maintenance projects for a couple of years, if something like that were to happen in unforeseen circumstance, but...
For me, the only conversation around COOP is asset, over time.
Yeah.
You're paying for your asset over time. That makes sense to me. But, the amount of fees you pay to make that happen?
Right.
My recommendation is, if you're going to go that route, go that route.
Yeah.
And make a significant difference. Given what we're talking about, too, what's that?
Yeah, do you know how much that is? How much are the fees?
Legal fees are estimated to me at 50,000.
Like, the, regardless, for like, to, to borrow 5 million was 6 million in the conversation in the finance, over twelve years ago. It was more than that, it was like six and a half.
Oh, you're talking about with payments?
Yeah.
Well, I don't care.
But beyond the interest, it was, I did, I should have brought it, I did it quick. It was, I want to say 150,000 dollars in total fees, in addition to the interest that's amortized over the life of the loan, so there's more than that 50,000, and we need to understand it better. I think Ashley let us know that she's still needing to get more information on that for us. But, there are, there are some fixed fees, and actually, when I looked at the 5 million versus the 4 million, the fees did go up, so they're not totally fixed. Anyway, that, that was kind of what caused me that, to kind of say, wait a second, if we really only need the 2 million, why would we pay, even if it's 100,000 dollars in fixed fees, when we can basically get it out of our own levy cycle, you know, over the next four years? If it was, if we needed five, I think we would not have this conversation, because it would be impossible for us to do it within a levy cycle.
To me, we're stealing from operating to do it.
Right.
That's my issue.
We're borrowing from ourselves.
Because ideally, we have the money saved up.
Right.
But we don't have it yet. If we don't have the money saved up, well, you can get it, you can get a loan.
But we're borrowing from the catch balance, we're not borrowing from, I mean...
We're not borrowing from, I mean.
And the cash balance is high at that point, it's 10, 12 million.
Yeah, but we could.
My issue is, we could put in this bus garage. That's where I would, I think it's going to happen, and we could actually start ripping teachers.
I'm telling you about in the next two years, borrowing two million.
If we were with COPS, we wouldn't do that.
I was just talking about in the next two years, borrowing two million for a bus garage. We're temporarily borrowing, we're not stealing, we did today.
You're betting that there's going to be no bad news in that four years for our operating.
Right, and, you know.
So, this way, there's no, there's a little cushion if we do it this way, that we're going to have to like sacrifice programming because we put in a bus garage.
But there's no, nothing that says we can't be back in three years or, you know, for the next living, but two.
Yeah, I just, I worry that that's tight, looking at that total balance at the bottom, that's tight to me. And, you know, over the next two years, we have six kids move in to the district that are in that line item that we were discussing, and, you know, at $100,000 a year per child, or $150,000 a year per child, we don't have choice in that matter. You know, something like that happens.
Well, we still have.
We're.
We still have the transfer from the general fund going into PI, right? Which is, I forget, what scenario where it's at, which is where the transfer. Seven million dollars that you choose not to transfer if there was a dire circumstance. So, over the course of the levy cycles, over four, almost five million dollars is going to be facility maintenance. And we might have to forego, we have, you know, a catastrophe. I agree, there's not a lot of cushion, but to go to 8.9 mills for the cushion, or to go to a COPS for the cushion, I am not as supportive of.
Yeah, I'd like to learn more about the fee structure, but it's a choice of financing. I mean, it's either you, either you kind of save up the money to be able to do a big, single line expenditure, and you just defer it off until you can save money for it. Or, you know, just like buying a house, it's like, there's no way I can throw down a half a million dollars or a million dollars on a house, I have to borrow the money because I don't have it right now. And I encourage you to do that.
Can we, can we wait? Can we push the bus garage another, at least even another year? Can we push it from '21 to '22?
Does it make a difference though?
A little bit.
If it has to happen in the next four years or within the levy cycle, does it make a huge difference when it happens?
Well, Mary Ray's saying just, in terms of it's new.
To me, you're losing the flexibility of, you know, the cushion you have in your operating budget. So, to me, the programming required in this school was much more important than the building. Programming is what we do, building is what we do again. Therefore, I feel like we're stealing from operating to fuck the bus garage. It's just, that's why I like the kind of the whole purpose of the COPS framework is because of this. Because we're doing something that doesn't fit into your normal PI.
But there's always going to be, so our master plan shows us that there's always going to be those things.
It allows us to build up our PI.
I mean, I think two million, I think two million is too small to do a COPS.
It also feels like something you do on a more, either on a bigger basis or on a more emergency basis. When I can see an outcome that doesn't rely upon it, and still, like you were about the programming, still, we have the flexibility to get to a point where we say, you know, something unexpected or came up and we have to figure out how to reshuffle these funds within our total budget.
No, I understand you. There are pros and cons to both.
Are there other types of loan instruments?
Not that we, that I'm aware of that we can use. This is, a COPS is, we're allowed to do it, it's not debt officially. And that's why it's not considered in the debt limit.
Because it's an operating piece.
Right. It's the most, yeah, it is the most commonly used instrument next to bonds, of course.
It's not a huge deal for me, it's just, if you ask me what I prefer, I prefer that. Because I want that cushion in our budget to be able to absorb emergency spending.
Yeah, they have to be tied to a specific project. So, it's not like if that, if that catastrophic event happened two years down the road and the bus garage is done, we can't now go get a COPS just to help us, you know, get through. It has to be connected to a, to an item that's important to us. You know, the bank needs it to be important to us.
But then, I'm sorry to interrupt, but then could you, I mean, is it even feasible to take a COPS for four and have a project for two?
Well, we would have to piece out items from in here, yeah.
So, like, it's harder now because he took off the three before.
We'd have to throw projects in that aren't currently under five.
Well, they could be in these items if they're specific.
Do they have to be longer-term assets or?
Um, I don't know about the term of the asset. They have to be a, certainly a fixed asset. I don't, I don't know if there's a life requirement on it, I can find out.
Like, this one is, I think it's not great, like HVAC replacements or roof, it's a building or something.
Actually, with terms of timing to be, about this year, when do we have, who's the coordinate, come to consensus?
So, first, we need to decide if you are looking at August. It would need to be certified to the county on May 6, I believe is the date. And that's, that's certified to the county. So, then there's the resolution for that, in the first resolution for that, so we count back. So, if we want to go in August, you need to make a decision by.
I'm just, I'm happy to, I think I'd be to support the 7.9, whether we take that, because it's not that, it's not a bad situation. So, I'm happy to support that, it's just, if you ask me what I prefer, I prefer a COPS with the flexibility.
And I did the, I did no COPS, and then I did the four, the highest possible. You know, we could do a $2 million COPS. But then even into the, is it worth it to pay? Even just $50,000 in legal fees in addition to the interest on the money instrument.
So, could we move forward with the 7.9 scenario? I think we need to finagle what's PI, what exactly comes out of it. So, we may need to give Ashley some input if there's additional versions of this that we want to see. Can we then, so do that and marry it with your five-year forecast update? Because I think it's very promising if there's potential for half a million, $2 million plus, or better word, in this year, that then, you know, exponentially grows. That could make that cushion much more, you know, visible for Greg.
I appreciate the optimism, but I don't want to sell that. I don't want to sit here and tell you, I'm going to come to you and have, you know, a specific dollar amount because I, I don't know that.
But if there was $200,000 each year over the five-year forecast, that's a million-dollar cushion right there that then gives a little bit.
$200,000 is a big number, though.
It is, yeah.
You know, which is what I was trying to convey with a lot of that.
Less than one percent of our budget, less than.
Yes, I hear you. But what I'm, what I'm telling you is I do believe that the district as a whole, before I got here, you know, was responsible. So, I don't know that there's. I don't know that there's that much.
So, for me, I'm comfortable with this, and we would have to talk about, and by this, I mean the 7.9 mil, lasting what we think is at least three, probably four years, maybe that's how we convey it. So, we convey appropriately that there is some risk in it going for four years that we think it would. And then if that was coupled with some potential savings in the forecast, it makes this even more palatable. And then I think, for me, that I have what I perceive as a viable option here.
7.9.
So.
Yes, you're leaning.
What, wait, can we just go, what's the difference between these two 7.9 scenarios?
One has the COPS, it's that purple line in the middle. One has zero COPS and one has $4 million of COPS. And then the lighter purple at the bottom there is your payments that would be each year.
Right.
Actually, with COPS, you have how many years to spend, three?
I look at that file, I believe, if, I think it was one, two. You would have to, and you'd have to do your project.
And the COPS payments, you know, it's backed on for 20 years?
Right. You could structure it.
You could structure it over the longer. This is a 20-year, but you could do 30.
And all the, all the financing, you could capitalize and amortize it?
I mean, can you do 10, maybe if you're shorter? Um, the scenarios I was provided were 20 and 30.
And you could structure that.
If we wanted to see a 10-year, we could ask for that.
I don't know, I mean, I just, I might pay off the debt as quick as I can.
I'll find, I think something's fine. I think it's good. It's not my preferred. So, I'll find that.
I'm good with the, I'm skeptical of coming back in two years. You know, like going, even if it is, even if it a good, even if it is a good message of saying like, hey, it's no new tax, it's four come off, four to one, but then you're still back in two years. I, personally, I'm concerned about the levy fatigue and stuff.
I think it's hard on everybody.
How I hear it, so I'm concerned about the two-year cycle. So, yeah, I think the 7.9 has legs, you know. Still, whether COPS are in or COPS are out, I think it's still available. We just still need to learn some more. But I like the 7.9 versus the four.
And not 9.9?
Certainly not.
No.
Well, and I think 7.9.
Headline, not 9.9.
This 7.9, if we make it four years, takes care of operating and better takes care of our facilities, supports for better facility maintenance than how the 7.9 four-year cycle has been ledged in the past. So, I think that there's a lot from the taxpayers' perspective that is rewarding about this scenario.
I do want to be clear, though, I don't know that I would be comfortable with levy campaign going out and saying, we will not be back to you in the next four years. I don't want to, I don't want to say it's going to be four, because if something were to happen in there, I.
Well, it'll work out.
I want to be very clear.
Or the board right now has to understand that we will have to limit our PI drill for in years three or four if we're not in a position, if something came out of the drill these numbers, to commit to four years.
Something in this plan may not happen.
Everything in this plan will not happen. That's the one thing we do.
Yes, exactly. I meant something in the fit may not get done.
Because I honestly, three years seemed like a year and a half since our last.
Really, it feels like 20 to me.
I'd like to get off of three years.
Yeah. I think it's premature for us to say how long it will last. I think we need to see what Ashley comes up with, I think we need to, you know, look at this. We have, what, she told me it was 190, it was an extra in the PI for this. So, maybe we don't build up the PI fund if we don't have to, I mean, I think there's.
The one thing is the .34.
Right, well, the, this, if we keep the transfer the way it was, this allows us to start building up a little bit of a balance in the PI fund, correct?
Yeah, all the problems you're talking about, the COPS, those, but.
Total revenue of the PI fund.
Yeah, I mean. That includes 1.1 in transfers, 1.1 from two mills.
Right.
And the 190 in your .34s if we're ready to afford.
Okay, so that's why, that is, there's quite a bit there in the balance, okay.
And already moved inside mills. But yeah, if the balance were to get higher than we needed it, that's where we stop making a transfer yet or move the inside mill to that.
So, I'm with you on this. I think we need a four-year cycle. This is what we've done traditionally, we've communicated really powerfully with our community, this is what we're aiming for. So, let's work this to see what it would entail to have us all be comfortable that 7.9 mills without a COPS could get in a four-year cycle.
And I know we like numbers that end with nine because we have this appearance. But I mean, we could do.
8.2.
8.2, 8.4, I mean, if you need it, that's, that's going to get it there.
You're probably a little light at 7.9 right now for everything that's quite accomplish.
Unless we can find some savings.
Unless you find savings.
And I'm reminded very clearly that one of the cardinal rules of going out for levies is don't under-ask. And we know what we need. We've done so much work to know what we need, so we should ask for what we need. And you're right, we should just restrict ourselves to.
We're building up the PI like you're going to say, maybe one of the last four years.
Maybe a little bit more in the 7.9.
Plus, we want to save.
If you're trying to use four years, though, you're still saving.
No, right, and yeah. But we could be in spring, in the spring, during the primaries.
Right, yeah, we'll just plan ahead for the, it will be March.
Right.
Speaking of timing, I went and studied August elections because I'm like, I lived here 25 years, I'm like, did I ever vote in August? And in Joga County, I went back, you can go back, they have to like 1970s on their, in their data. And I think it was in 19, early 1970s, there was one August election in Joga County that pertained to people that live in our school district, and it was a county-wide, and I did Kayahoga County, and their schools back to 1970. There was not one August election for anyone in the Shippurin School District that voted in an August election. So, people are not accustomed to an August election. So, I would have a really hard time putting in August's election. Well, what do you think, though, about the opportunity to educate our parents and really leverage the vote-by-mail option for people who are going to be. It's early August, I think, I think, I just don't know when we do it. I think people are, are in vacation mode. I mean, they're just, I just, I think the people who you're going to vote in August are the people who don't go anywhere, and I don't, and I think our parents are very mobile. I don't know, I just. My hope is that if you can drive more of our parents, more, my hope is that you can drive more of the people that we've had a chance to reach out directly, educate about this in August. And that, and my concern is that in November, you'll have more people that we haven't had a chance to educate about the need or hospital number 20 or all the work we've done with PI. But I mean, I can be, I'm sort of like bragging on that, I, I mean, this is not, I'm like betting the table on this, but I have, you know, I, I mean, I just, I mean, I was, I was really surprised, but I was like, not one election in August.
The danger in the election to me is just not getting people to vote. If people, it's going to not vote, they've shown in the past they support the election. If I think any more people, that's, this is not going to ever happen. That they'll probably, November seems like it was a better chance to me. Because you're going to have, we know that your people aren't going to be there. If the people who are going to support are not going to be there, like, or are going to be scared of the people that leaders are not going to be there, the people that would support us are not going to be there.
The last time we did November, we had very good numbers. I don't know that it was a presidential.
I think August has never been done. I think there's also sort of a perception sometimes of people like, what are they trying to do? You know, like, what are they trying to survive us? Or, you know, something like, I don't want that, that would be a hurl that we would have to add to our education. Not that it can't be done, but I think we would need to keep that in mind in education.
I think what I saw, when I, you know, I mean, I had to go in and click through and say, what was this one? You know, and a lot of times the August ones were a second try, you know. And a lot of times the August ones were a second try, you know, for something that failed in, either March or May or, you know, sometimes it was February's, I mean, there's.
I did get estimates back, Kayahoga, estimates it would cost about 16,000. And Jaga, it would cost like 11, 12. Just keep that in mind too.
That's, that's, that's what I thought, because I remember, I remember years ago, it was 30,000. What's it, what's it in the?
Close 20,000.
Um.
Is it the same price or is it?
No, I don't know that, it's not as.
You have to depend, isn't part of the cost is, if it used, at least it used to be, it depends who's on the ballot. So, the cost is shared by.
On a general election, a special election, I believe, they were quoting the numbers based on precinct.
I think it's like that word. We didn't, we tried to buy everybody out of that.
Yeah.
I know, this is some of the data we had in our finance, I just wanted to look and see when there's a, when there's a higher number, is it more likely to be approved or defeated? At least, you know, looking at this for levies, just looking at the data that's here, for levies, it's like.
Better one's farther.
Yeah. I'm not holding this out for you, this is so I can see it. No, but the, the two, the lowest one that came out was approved at 57%. The one that was defeated, 49%, that's the second lowest turnout. But every other turnout, I guess, in 53, I just think that's pretty close. All the other higher, you know, higher turnouts, passed. That data seems to indicate when you have lower voter turnout, you have more likelihood being defeated.
I don't think you have enough data on that, because we hardly ever fail levies, so you're looking at relative successes, right?
Right, but our last, our last fail wasn't, was the worst turnout.
Was poor turnout. Well, it just, to me, it's, there are different, there are different campaigns. Going during the presidential election, especially, especially this one, is gonna require a very broad and robust messaging. Because you, every single voter out there is gonna need to understand the need, the urgency. Versus, you know, a more targeted campaign, which relies on targeting the message and then getting your supporter, your supporters to come in. So, it's really, you know, I support, since you and Greg are the board reps to the levy campaign and will be helping to support that, and really support your preferences on this. It's just different campaigns.
I, I, I'm just really worried about August, people thinking like, they're trying to sneak it through or, or, and I just even thinking, I mean, we'd have to educate people when?
Tomorrow.
Again, right, and then, and then hope that they, they can't, they can't get an absentee ballot for August until like July, you know, I, I just, I don't know.
I don't think they're, I agree, nobody wants any perception that we're trying to do something sneaky, because certainly we have had major transparency about why we need this. They're just different campaigns, that's all. We go into it with our eyes open and, and the levy committee will have a different level of expenditure and messaging and manpower needed to do a campaign during this presidential election. That's the only difference that I see. All right, so let's wrap up with next steps, so we all know what's coming next. Do you still want to see cop information?
Yeah.
So, do you want me to have an expert here?
No, I mean, for me, I'd like more to see the math. I'd just like to see the math, like the amortization table and, you know, how much are the fees if it's like a two-million cops or a four-million cops.
Maybe term differences.
Yeah, it's like, what are, what are the delta's, what are, what are we paying for the underwriting, for the purpose to be able to do it? And, yeah, what are the, what are the delta's?
You want to see 10 or you want to see 20, 30?
Oh, for the term, I mean, for me, it's 20, 30, I'd rather have it match the asset.
Eric, can you, do you want to see 10?
Well, I, I mean, I just, the interest, I, I mean, I don't know what the interest rate is, but it's a huge interest rate.
Well, it's not that hard for them to throw 10, 20, 30.
I don't.
Okay, and then, are we looking at just the 2 million, so the most gross amount? Do you want to borrow more than 2 million?
I guess, I'd, I'd see two and four, what is like the financing cost for either one, underwriting cost, you know, total underwriting, legal, underwriting, all that stuff. And I, I want to know, I want to verify when that spend has to happen, what's, what's actually the reason for it, 2 or 3, is that a big difference?
Or is there an alternative, pay it back early? I mean, if you can pay it back early, you know, that might be something too, if you could.
Be like some of the.
You do a 20 year and if you.
Prepayment penalty.
Yeah.
Okay, so a little bit more background on cops, and then with regard to scenarios, we're looking at 7.9, something a little worth of that. To get us, we want a four-year levy cycle, we're all in agreement, we want to try to get a four-year levy cycle. And then, probably in our next discussion, need to talk about what would go to PI directly, and if there was a PI levy component, and what would go into operating directly. So, if you have any breakdown, do you want her to run?
I'll tell you, it's your PI, it's your.
Okay.
What do you want your PI to be?
The 4 mil. I mean, so one of them should be 4 mils going to PI and remaining going to operating.
Now, can, let's just go back to the 2017 levy, that was 8.9.
9, right. 9.5.
5.5 was operating for three years, so if we're trying to go.
But you're not putting the money out of operating to PI, so you have to look at it.
Okay. And we, and for 3.4 mills, we built a 20, like, asset.
With.
Which we're paying.
Right, because, because you're no longer transferring the 2 million out of operating to PI, it actually kind of is, what Matt Dolan was saying, it's all the same type of money.
Yeah.
It's just the message of like how, how it would be understandable, I think Greg has a point, I like that idea that 4 mills of debt is falling off, that we went to facilities. We're replacing it with 4 mills that go into maintaining those facilities that we built, some of that debt. But there may be some trade-offs that affect our cash balance, we'll have to look at.
I mean, it's a fixed number, it's a commitment, so it's like those four can't be backed out, they can't even take it out.
Right.
That's four that's in.
But they don't have to be voted on again, it's a continuing levy. So, that, I mean, that 4 mills, we're not having to go back and ask for every four years with our operating.
So, like theoretically, in four years from now, we go back for 3.9.
Well, that's like.
It would be, you would expect it to be smaller.
Yeah. It takes the pressure off of our operating.
Yeah, remember, you're coming off of a series of 7.9 just in operating, before that bond issues are, then there's a story to be told with some of the things we've done in contracts and insurance over time. Although rates have risen, it's able, it's enabled us to go for less than the operating side.
Good job. That was progress.
Okay, so when do you want me to bring this information to you?
Like February, right, wait, stop, but in March, there's probably the next meeting.
March four.
All right, so what do you have, can you summarize what you have to do?
I'm going to bring more information on cops, as far as the rate schedules, the amortization. I'm gonna have a full 10, 20, and 30 years. We're gonna look at two and four million? Sorry?
3 billion.
I said million, I did not say billion. No, billion. And then I'll pull the different scenarios of 7.9 and work those out and see when we would need to, when we can stop the transfer, when maybe we can move the inside millage back and those types of things.
And then maybe having to go a little bit higher if you, if it's not working out, the, the goal is for at least four years, even if we're gonna slash the balance a little bit.
Any takeaways from the, any takeaways from expense, first, first item that you presented?
Do I have takeaways or do you have takeaways? I presented, do you have takeaways?
You're gonna find a million dollars in savings.
I'm going to, yes. Yeah, I mean, you know, these are things that we're, we're always doing. So, yeah, we're gonna look at, I'm not only gonna look at those large items, those were just for you to see, you know, what we're looking at. And the goal is always to reduce as much as possible.
So, I would say, my opinion and takeaway from that is, next time we come back with a plan, crystallized plan. Maybe not crystallized, but a plan, how do?
Yes, that was always the goal, it's just right now, it was, I was only trying to give you an update, we don't have a plan yet, we don't have steps. We're analyzing and looking for the information, it's not just like that, we have to.
And my feedback, I appreciate that you are always looking, and I think I'm having all the right conversations and you have been. And I think that the district has always spent money wisely. I think that in the transition from our last treasure to the new, there is an opportunity within our forecast for budget incremental, you know, just to, to 4% and put it over the next four years. And that very, and that that may be rare, some savings is, and a small amount of savings really be typical, pivotal in this conversation, so that's.
Yeah, those types of things certainly I think are, are possible. I don't, I wouldn't call those savings, I would call those better estimating.
Okay, better estimating.
You know, and yes, over the course of the five-year forecast, it looks like a savings. And, and certainly when, you know, we put all those things together, those are great. But, you know, what I was talking about tonight is what are we looking at, where we can actually save hard dollars this year, next year?
I'll take better estimating.
Okay.
The savings associated is better estimating. More money.
Yeah.
Less spent, more savings, more not spent.
Yeah, I mean, I can put in the forecast a lower percentage, and it looks like a savings, it may not.
It's real estate.
Right.
Well, I feel like, you know, we're asking our taxpayers to reach into their wallets and find a little bit more money for us. And if we can reach into our wallet and say, we don't need to spend, you know, all of that, then that's, that's our job. And I know you're doing it every day, I appreciate it, and you too, Bob. All right.
Wait your report.
Done.
At every regular meeting of the school board, you invite public comment. Would you like to make a public comment? He's like, Larry.
She's like, can I move to adjourn?
Now, with their consent agenda items, can I have a motion for consent agenda items, 8, 8A through 8R?
Still moved.
All right, Mr. Bruno, would you like to walk through these?
It's concerned.
I mean, I read them, but.
Take the roll.
Bruno, you take the roll.
I will, Mr. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsker?
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mrs. Kirby?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutcliffe?
Yes.
Correct. Superintendent's recommendations, can I have a motion for superintendent's recommendations, 9A through 9C? Second.
Second.
Doctor Hunt?
Item A is, just to point out, not a very good position, this is a replacement to a designation that the board received. Item B is the second and final phase of our working team backward, taking the work profile and actually bringing to roles and action steps. And we had to put some of the last report, report about kind of board involvement, thinking, some of our conversations tonight, patient informers and all that. And I would see is the second reading of policy J E E. That's again, just a reminder, it's a change in the date of the conference.
Mr. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsker?
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mrs. Kirby?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutcliffe?
Yes.
Okay, treasurer's recommendations, have a motion for 10B through 10C?
Second.
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 Item 10A is the financial reports from the month of January. In the first report, the general fund summary report, you'll see a negative number there on the unrestricted grants made, it's a negative revenue number. If you'll recall, I did bring it to your attention before, there was, not, I don't want to call it an error, but there was, the way that they were reporting revenue in the past for the Excel Tech revenue. Was putting it all in the general fund and then moving it over to the 14 fund at the end of the year. When I came in, I was not aware that that was happening, so that transfer did not get made. So, now the transfer has been made, I wanted to wait till January because I wanted the auditors to look at it. I wanted them to agree to it, to see it, to know next year when they see a very large number being transferred or a change in revenue. I, I wanted them to be aware of it, so they saw it, they decided that it did not need to be an audit adjustment, because for the purposes of the CAFR, the financial statement, the 14 fund is rolled into the general fund. So, for that, the purpose is there, it's an intra-fund transfer, it's not a transaction that affected the CAFR. So, they were fine with it, I waited, you know, until I was able to have that conversation with them, I made the transaction in January, so that's why you see that negative number there. It's not quite as large as I expected it to be, and that is because it's offset by casino revenue that came in, and that was, I did not calculate that into my first estimate. That's why you see the negatives, or negative revenue there. Next report, the general fund variance report, I did change graphs here, I know last month we talked a couple of uses of it, it was confusing. So, what you see there in those, those three small graphs for total revenue, total expenditures, and the cash balance, just comparing where we are to where we expected to be. Our graphs there. General fund revenue report, the graph that I included there this month is just comparing to the year, so it goes January, or July through January. You can see, you can compare our revenue to what it was the month in the previous year. You'll see January, the orange bar for this year is lower than January of last year, and that is because of what I just explained, making that, that transaction that showed a negative number.
I thank you for changing those graphs, for me personally, I can, please, give me a much, I can look at this and say, how do we compare to last year and how, and where are we each month? So, I appreciate it.
So that the audience.
Oh, yeah.
That's okay. I just had to reenter my.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm not, in the past, I think we have. What's that?
You have a wide charter.
Okay, moving on to the expenditure report, graph there, I did the same thing for the revenue, just so you can compare to the prior year there. That December number, I know we're talking about January, but that December number is the one that pops out, I mean, when you look at it, that's because we made the transfer in December to the year. Financial summary report of all funds, nothing significant to report there, negative fund balances, I don't think are anything to be significantly concerned about. Federal grants, and that the rotary is the money that we have coming in from Excel Tech from the other districts. Bank reconciliation, typical reconciling items there. SRS ACH, which, which is expensed during the month and not, the transaction doesn't get entered into the bank until the end of the month. So, that actually hits our bank account after month end, and then the same with the state taxes, 16,000 dollars there. Summary deposits and investments, Star Ohio is still our highest yield right now, it's dropped below now 1.79. seven nine percent. But it's still our, our highest percentage. We're holding money in there until we need it, and then leaving it to the operating bank accounts. Any questions on those before I move on to the next item? Item ten B is a Ben and Al certificate. Certificates, which is a plus that is a little bit more. This is the library book fair. This is, they operate this every year. They purchase books, the kids will be, the kids buy the books, and then they pay followers for those. And then item C is donations, two donations, both for the Tiger, for Coffee Shop. These were items where they had committed to helping us get that up and running, and then we just requested reimbursement of those, that's why those just now came in. And it's thirteen thousand, eight hundred, eight dollars, fifteen cents from Shrimp Falls Educational Foundation, and forty thousand dollars from the Shrimp Falls PTO. Is your question set?
You will convey our appreciation for the donations.
Mr. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsker? Yes. Mrs. Rose? Yes. Mrs. Garby? Yes. Mrs. O'Donnell? Yes.
Any other business that you'd like to discuss? Seeing that, our next meeting is going to be Wednesday, March fourth, six p.m. in the San Francisco meeting room.
In accordance with Ohio revised code one two one dot two two, the Shrimp Falls Board of Education will go into executive session for the sole purpose of the consideration of any, any of the family matters, point of...
And...
And compensation of a public...
I would second that.
I don't expect...
All right, you don't expect any action after you take the session? Do you have to take a roll on that?
Yes. Mr. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsker? Yes. Mrs. Rose? Yes. Mrs. Garby? Yes. Yes.